So two. All right, well, thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate you joining us and kind of having our first conversation here and getting to know you all. And let's go ahead and start with introductions, so.
Michael Preeden, City Council.
Gary Ross, City Council.
Cheryl Pellerin, City Council.
Yep, you got it.
Tony Pryor, Fire Chief.
Sisters Camp.
Kristy Miller, I'm the President of the Board of Directors.
Jack McGowan, Vice President of the Board of Directors.
Tom Herman, Sisters Camp.
President, Secretary.
Brett Campbell, I'm on the Board of.
And if you hold the button down for a second, the red light will come on, then release, there you go.
Ron Cooper, Board of Directors.
Jordan Wheeler, City Manager.
All right, and Sarah McDougall with the Council here. Let's see, it looks like we were going to kick this off, talking about wildfire resiliency and emergency preparedness. Now, I mean, I don't know about you, but we haven't been talking about that at all this year. Yeah.
Boom.
Well, yeah, maybe I'll just kick off with like, just logistics and background on the joint meetings that we've been scheduling with all the overlapping districts. It's been a council goal to kind of establish relationships or reestablish and have, you know, more cooperation between the different districts, like the City Council and the School Board and the Fire Board and the Recreation Board, because you all are elected leadership of the community and we have a lot in common that we're working on together, wildfire being a big one. And so, this year, we've been scheduling these meetings, and so this is actually the first one that's scheduled. And really, the agenda's kind of loose. We have a couple topics to kind of update on and, you know, have a dialogue about, but also a chance just to have questions and answers and discussion about, hey, what's the city working on with this? And what does the fire district think about that? Really kind of left it open-ended for the Council and the Fire Board, District Board, to have a conversation, just Q and A session, too. I don't know if the Council and the Fire District Board has had a joint meeting, at least in recent memory, but, yeah, and so, I mean, it's a, I think it's a good thing that there is this conduit of communication between the City Council and our overlapping taxing districts, because we share, you know, probably, I don't know how big the district is population-wise, but at least probably half our, you know, constituents are the same, and we share a lot of the same interests, too. Mayor, welcome. And so, one of those, you know, the biggest topics that we've been working on, the first one, kind of wanted to roll the ball out, and sure, an update on where we're at is on wildfire mitigation resiliency. That's been a council goal for the last several years, and it's kind of evolved as, you know, we've learned more about what best practices are in terms of defensible space and building hardening, you know, monitoring what the state is doing with legislation, especially around the fire map, and, you know, maybe we could have made more progress faster if the map was, you know, good to go from the get-go, but now it looks like that thing's going to be repealed, so. But, you know, just to kind of give you an update on where we're at with that, the Planning Commission last week had a work session on defensible space standards. So, the city is forging ahead with defensible space regulations that would cover all new development within city limits. So, new subdivisions, new expansions, remodels, things like that, the defensible space regulations would apply. And the model that we, you know, have kind of built our code around is the IBHS standards, if you're familiar with that, you know, especially with like, the no flammable materials, no vegetation within the first five feet, being one of the main things that the IBHS has in their regulations. And so, that's going to be coming back to the Planning Commission on the 20th for a public hearing, and then in April, the City Council will have the ordinance in front of them for adoption. To my knowledge, we're one of the first cities to fully adopt it into our development code. Ashlyn has been a leader in this space, and we've kind of been monitoring and kind of adopting a lot of what they've been pursuing and done in the last five years, but I think it's something that collectively, as a community, can be proud of, that this council and the Fire District and all the neighborhoods have done fire-wise, and they're taking to heart defensible space, we should be proud of, and, you know, kudos to you all on working on this and recognizing that we're in a very fire-prone and fire-adapted region of our state. So, any questions about that? I mean, I know, I just kind of threw that out there, but that's one of the big ones, and that's been a goal for the Council for a while. And I think the opportunities for collaboration would be the company inspections and that are happening, and how maybe we can align those with the defensible space regulations. We've talked about incentive programs for existing properties. So, there's definitely options and opportunities there to kind of continue to build our collaboration, cooperation between us.
Chief, maybe you could talk about what we're currently doing with Chief Puller, Deputy Chief Puller, about the inspections that we can do on an ongoing basis with our volunteers.
Yeah, so, we, well, there's multiple facets for our Fire and Life Safety Division with our Fire Marshal Jeff Puller that's heading up, and Stephen Lord is also his assistant in there. So, we're doing the home inspections that you, the City Manager, just spoke about. And we have the 55 square miles of fire service area, and then the 800 square miles of ambulance service area surrounding us. So, not only in city limits, outside of there, where we're going, we're doing those inspections. So, they've done 69, or 65 of them since January, and another 25 to go on those home inspections. So, they're cranking them out, and we're getting a lot of calls on those. So, those inspections are, Stephen can't do them himself, so he's trained. We have about five core members, Fire Corps members, that are really actively involved in doing those inspections and helping Stephen out. And we've volunteered to assist the State Fire Marshal's office in going even further. So, there's some down in the Le Pine area that it looks like they're going to be able to get to, but our goal is to make everybody, at least around in Sisters Country, I know that's the term that's trademarked, but, but in the Sisters area, the Greater Sisters area, we're trying to get out and do as much as we can in that whole space for the assessments. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys on the defensible space code, because I think that's, we think that's an important part of moving forward with the community as a whole, especially on the expansion that we're talking about, the UGB expansion, and what we do with building materials, because everybody has looked at and saw the videos that are rampant out there on the Palisade Fires area, the Maui Fires, all of those other ones, and it's, and it's not necessarily the vegetation, and that's a portion of it, but it's a home-to-home. And what you guys are doing, moving forward on there, I think is commendable of taking the steps and being one of the first to adopt that, because that's really what's going to save the city area, is what we're doing home-to-home, as well as the mitigation that we do outside of there. So, we're also partnering up with the US Forest Service and COFMS and the other agencies, Division of Forestry, in any collaborative effort we can do with grants, or any of those that can help in that mitigation aspect. So, if there's an avenue that we can partner up, that maybe one person has a better opportunity to receive a grant, and we can work together on them, to mitigate really that buffer area outside of the city. And what that space is, we're trying to work through that and see where that is, and how we can help them. But those are a couple of the ones that we're doing. And the ones that we, really doesn't get mentioned a lot, but I think our Fire Marshal, Jeff Puller, needs to have a lot of credit for, is getting the commercial building inspections completed. So, those with, he has done a tremendous amount of work as far as getting that program back up and running, the inspections that businesses are required to do, and identifying some of those things in the businesses that can help them be safer, and bring them up to code, what they should be. And he's had, we've had nothing but great feedback from him of what he's trying to do out there. He's meeting with them, we're trying to develop a form that will go out to them ahead of time. So, it's a pre-inspection checklist, so that they can, the businesses will get them, they have an opportunity to look at, here's the key things that we're missing, that businesses typically miss when we come in and do inspections. So, they'll, they can get on top of those before we get there. And then, we work with them to bring those things up to code. So, the Fire and Life Safety Division is a very busy division right now, as well as our operational side. We're getting very busy.
What, with your inspection program, I think you guys are working with one of the neighborhoods, maybe Tollgate or Crossroads, on the pilot program for the certification program?
Yeah, so you're talking about the IBHS.
Wildfire prepared.
Yeah, certification program. What we, what we found, and it may not be the venue yet for this, that'll be another workshop, is the insurance component of it, is many people, all the public is receiving their increases, cancellation notices, all of those. So, we're looking at every avenue we can in our Fire and Life Safety Division to tackle that. And the fire-wise assessments, although they help in communities becoming fire-wise, we're looking at these codes that you're adopting, those things that can push us forward and meet those inspections. So, IBHS has a certification program, homeowner can apply for it, send in the photos, that agency reviews those photos, looks at it to see if they meet the criteria for IBHS certification, gives them that, or sends back those, you need to change that. So, we've talked to them to say, we have 18 to 22 communities here that potentially want to be in these pilot, this pilot program, to be part of this, because the funding for IBHS is insurance companies, they're funding all of the research they do. So, it's going, we're hoping that it'll give us a chance to have a seat at the table, so to speak, with the insurance companies, to see if this is an avenue that helps them be more comfortable with us, instead of multiple of them pulling out and just not writing policies, period, in the whole Central Oregon area. So, I think this certification program, what we've talked to the agency, and what we believe is going to be the best avenue for us to help homeowners maintain that, and become a safer community, and in the, really, the long-term goal of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I just think that's, I think that's great, great news. And I was wondering, I was looking over a defensible space grant program that Jefferson County, the COIC and the Fire Chiefs worked on to get private property owners up to $599.99. There's a reason for that. Is that anything kind of getting traction for Deschutes County, something similar?
Yeah, we're hoping that gains, because the Deschutes County one wasn't as much. I think it's between $200 and $250, instead of the almost $600 that Jefferson County is offering. And one of the other grant programs that we're also working on is trying to get an air curtain burner. So, we've already set up to have the dumpsters come to the communities to give them an avenue to get rid of that. But, one of the things that, speaking to Stephen, and he had a great idea when he brought it to me when I came here, is that these air curtain burners, we're not shuffling those, that debris to somewhere else, like the landfills. They still have to do something with it when they get there, or chipping. And everybody knows, we don't, we don't need chips or bark mulch anymore, because that's a no-no, that's going away. So, we have to do something better with it. And these air curtain burners are going to allow us to take, pull into communities, they can take their brush limbs, small trees, put them in these, it's a, it's an accelerated burning process with air that comes in, and it basically incinerates it into this biochar that becomes some of the best fertilizer you can have. And then, once you're done with it, that fertilizer is there, and the residents in that community that you're in can take that, and they can use it in their flower beds, they can use it in their gardens and anything, it's some of the best fertilizers. Yeah. So, we think that's a great idea. And Deschutes County and Jefferson County are looking at those, and if we are able to get one, we would be able to, one of our surplus chassis that we're, we're getting from one of our remounts is potentially going to go to be able to pull that around into communities. So, we're using one of our older vehicles that's getting replaced as one of these that can pull this air curtain burner to different communities. So, lots of grants. Depending on the size, we're looking about $70,000 to $90,000 for one. So, they're definitely not cheap, but, but the benefit of them is wonderful, we think.
The other thing that the City Council has set a goal, and we've been working on, is the building hardening standards. And that's also been sort of hiccuped with the State Fire Map, and how the applicability of that R-327 section of the building code gets applied. But, the Council made the decision to continue to forge ahead despite, you know, the criteria in the map, and now it looks like the legislation or the map might be repealed, and sort of, you know, the question is, how does R-327, they can get, you know, applied to communities? And so, I think it was wise of Council saying, let's continue to move ahead and adopt that interminable code, regardless of what the state might do. And so, that would put into place in our code, requiring any new development within the city limits to use, you know, the R-327 building hardening standards, I guess, with hardy plank, Class A roofing materials, the ventilation standards, things like that. And that's going to be coming after the adoption of the defensible space standards, starting the spring and going into the summer. And again, we'll be continuing to watch the state and what kind of legislation may be coming out, but we've had those conversations with Senator Golden and the Fire, State Fire Chief, about our interest in adopting those to apply citywide.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Any questions about that? A lot of this you might know, because I wanted to thank the Chief, and, you know, our staff has been organizing a wildfire mitigation group on a monthly basis. And we've had Chief Pryor at some of the workshops. Over the last year, we've had numerous workshops on defensible space and building hardening, and being a resource for our planners. Matt Martin, our planner, has been working on this. And then, just the cooperation on the monthly mitigation group meetings. And I think one of the things that I've seen in those meetings is, you know, just the collaboration on how we all work together here with the Forest Service, you know, state, local districts, the city, and one of those outcomes also is community groups like C4C being involved as well. We have the April 13 Emergency Preparedness Panel, the same week as the April 16 Emergency Preparedness Fair. And so, next month, there's going to be a lot of public education, public outreach about wildfire preparedness, and, you know, getting your family prepared, but also, you know, what is the city doing, the inspection programs, getting people to sign up for Deschutes Alert. You know, I think, again, just kind of an outcome of what kind of cooperations happens in the Sisters Country or Sisters area on these issues. So, you guys are 55 square miles, is that right?
Yeah, fire service area.
We're 1.8, so.
Got a big footprint.
Yeah, but very much larger on the ambulance. The other thing, we're trying to maintain that, and that goes to your ISO rating, and that's important for you. And when the insurance companies look at that, what is your ISO rating? So, when they look at a risk map, their risk map, not wildfire risk map, when they look at their risk map, what are we able to provide as services to, and our ISO rating, having one of those as a three is, is very low, really. That's, that's a great rating. So, our goal is to maintain that. I just went through the same process up in Alaska, right before I left, up there, and a full review, and an ISO. So, they, they've changed how they look at the communities. It's the same, but their evaluation process is slightly different than it used to be. And maintaining that is very important for us, because that means what your policies cost.
Chief, can you explain what an ISO rating is?
Insurance Service Organization. And so, they look at, there's components of your operational, you respond, your water supply, dispatch center, and your call volumes and your call response. So, they look at these areas, and they give you ratings. So, your personnel and response is 50%, your water supply is worth 40%, your communications is worth another 10%. So, they total them, and it actually goes up to like 105% is what the percentage is of, go figure, the ISO thing, instead of 100%. But, but they look at all those different areas, and they evaluate. So, we, our call volume, our call data, the amount of apparatus, our personnel, our mutual aid responses, and then they look at your water supply, how good is your water supply in your area, and how is that maintained? So, how, how often do you flush your hydrants? How, how big are your mains? Do you, are your mains looped? Are they dead ends? Those kind of things all make a difference in water supply, how, your reserves. So, do you have a million, 3 million, what's your water capacity for that? And your pumps, your backup systems, your generators, so that you don't lose those? They look at all of that, which is a big component of it. And then, when they look at that, they end up giving you an evaluation of what your rating is. So, everything past a five-mile rating from, from your main station, or from one of your stations, automatically goes to a nine or 10. And everything below five-mile areas from your stations gets a rating. So, it behooves us to have our outstations on all those service areas that are close, and we maintain that five-mile, no matter where we're at. And so, we gain it. Your hydrant system gives you a boost in it, too. When it's away from a hydrant system, how well can we shuttle water supply and keep water moving? So, they'll test you on that to see how much water you can flow for a continuous amount of time without breaking it. And that means water tenders, our mutual aid, auto aid agreements that we have when those engines come in, and how long you can maintain your water supply. So, they look at that. What we're looking at now is some of the things that, I looked at your population 10 years ago, and at 2,330 people, and then today, or 24, so it's 3,700, so you had a 58.8% increase in, in your population. And we had a almost 70% increase in call volume. So, our call volume increase is outpacing your population growth. And we, we haven't changed our staffing since 2014, 10 years ago either. And so, our, we had a 5% increase last year, and then what the staggering one was our, we had almost a 20% increase in simultaneous calls. And so, that taxes our resources of personnel. And so, those are the things that, as a district, we're looking at, what, what is the best move for us to make sure that we can maintain the best, absolute best emergency service? And we're doing 75% medical calls, is what we do. And you have a median population of just under 50 years old, but a very active community, so that's a blessing, really. But, when you have that, people come in, and what's your population going to continue to grow? The UGB that we're talking about, I don't want to get ahead of myself on here, but.
It's open.
The UGB growth is another thing, is when you're doing that, when we look at that, what you're putting in for high density and those, how is our call volume increase, is going to increase? And, and do we have the staffing capacity, the apparatus and those to keep up with it? We just replaced a bunch of our apparatus, and two of our ambulances are getting replaced right now, because we had almost 190,000 miles on one of our ambulances, because, because as you know, as we can see on that call volume increase, we're running the wheels off of them to keep pace with the emergency medical calls. So, we changed this year in how we were looking at our replacement schedule, instead of a yearly, you know, 10 years or 12 years of what we had before, is moving it to a shorter year period, but more of a mileage change, because that's the one thing we, we definitely don't need to have, is emergency vehicles breaking down, going to calls, because there are too, there's too much wear and tear on them. So.
So, the call volume increasing more than the population, you think, is it, you know, because of the aging demographic, or type of, you know, the nature of, you know, type of calls being more medical now?
Yeah, that's certain factors. I mean, you could look at pretty much any city you would want to, and I think, when, when I looked at them and did the same thing, it was funny, coming from Alaska down to here, I was 76% medical, you're 75. It's relatively the same, and no matter where you're looking at, if you're talking emergency services, fire and medical.
Do you track calls from city limits versus outside city limits?
That's, that's all of our medical call volume in our whole service area. We can, we can scale down to districts and look at those, and dive a little deeper into those, into the minutia, but we really, really, to us, we're looking at medical, medical calls as a whole, and, and the staffing and the apparatus that we have to source that.
So, speaking of the UGB, you know, you don't have to sit through a presentation from Scott, because he's done enough of those over the last year. But, we're about a year into the amendment process on the expansion of the urban growth boundary. We're at the stage now where the Council has narrowed down to the preferred alternative to study, which there's actually an A and B, because we, there's a rezone application at Deschutes County right now, at the MMV property, so up there, you know, McKenzie Meadows, Tollgate area. And there is a hearing, the hearings officer is going to hear that case, hear that zone change application, I think, next month. And so, our next meeting with our stakeholder committee, the next update for the Planning Commission and City Council will probably be around that time, so we'll know, hopefully, what that outcome might be with the hearings officer. And that will help kind of narrow down, hopefully, the alternative moving forward. So, option A would be over here, the expansion area, if you've been kind of watching this process. The city needs about 250 acres for the next 20 years to accommodate growth, and basically doubling of our current population. So, to your concern about keeping up, we have those same concerns, and, you know, with growth comes, you know, additional taxes and things like that, to hopefully offset that and build, add staff to keep the current service levels. But, the majority of that 250 acres is residential lands, and the Council has a interest in more affordable housing with those expansion areas. So, I think it's like 200 acres of residential, 50 or so, commercial, these are all round numbers. And then, some land for schools, 15 acres, and then 19 acres for parks, expansion in that area. So, the next step, like I said, will be in like, I think, the end of April and May is when we're going to have more updates for Council, and really refining that preferred alternative for the acres that we're looking at over here.
Yeah, a couple things. You folks have SDCs as well, as a special district? Do you have SDCs for new construction?
No.
No, they, they're not, they're eligible as a special district, aren't they?
No, I don't think so.
Park districts are.
It's, it's not a, it's not the same as like a utility system, right, for fire apparatus and stuff? I don't think there's, I mean, you could probably do an improvement district.
Yes, yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, you know, the cost of expansion and what that means for you folks, and other funding sources beyond what you have with your tax base. It's definitely worth looking at, and I'm not an expert on it, but I've been on a couple special districts, I know that sometimes is what saves them. Lost my train, thought, oh, as we look at the new areas that may come into the city, one of my goals personally is to really emphasize housing that will have families in it. So, workforce housing, lower-income housing, that will keep our population a little younger, one hopes, and looking less like me, and more like some of the other folks in this room, they're a little bit younger than I am. And, because right now, they're priced out of the housing market, there's no doubt about that. And while that may not help your call volume, one would like to believe that if we're successful, it wouldn't increase significantly due to another bunch of retirees coming in, and wonderful place to retire, but that's hard on you folks. And the last thing I want to say is that, as far as I'm concerned, our fire district's 55 square miles as well. I mean, because whatever happens in the surrounding area impacts us significantly and greatly. A fire in Tollgate can quickly become a fire in Sisters. Fire in Crossroads could quickly become a fire in Sisters, and, or out off Holmes Road, with the wind blowing the other way. So, you know, we're all in this together, from my perspective, and anything we can do to help is important to me. And I, I'm hoping that some of the infrastructure improvements that Paul, his group are making, related to water and water movement, water main size, and the fact that we have another reservoir on the drawing board, will help a little bit with keeping that number at three.
Yes, you were describing that, Chief. It made it clear.
Um, it made it clear to me how interdependent we all are. And, I just wanna say that I appreciate all of your skillsets that you bring to us. The new code, things like that we can do, I mean, we look to you to be the experts, so, you know, you see things every day that we don't. And, if you're out there seeing things that we're not addressing, please bring it. Um, I, I appreciate having experts, because I only know what I learn, and it's not a topic that I've spent a lot of time with, so, um, I've been digging in where I can, but, yeah, I, I like to learn, so, and thank you for being here to share, and, uh-
We feel the same way.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think, you know, I really wanna thank the council on behalf of, of the, of the board for inviting us. I think this is long overdue. Uh, the, if you look at the two organizations, it's the city council and Sisters Camp Sherman Fire, that are really the, I'd say the linchpin, there are many linchpins, but this is the linchpin of the community. And I personally hope that, that we can continue this dialogue on, on a regular basis. I think, we're off and running here, but, but personally, and I hope my board members agree with me, I think this needs to be an ongoing dialogue, I think we should meet at least once a year in, in a, in a session like this, maybe a tabletop exercise at one point. Uh, but really discuss how do we work together and, and, and plan ahead in the event of, of, of a, an emergency, whether it be Cascadia subduction, whether it be the wildfire, whether it be the snowstorm of the century, the windstorm of the century, there are ways that we can work together and be proactive, uh, that when that unfortunate eventuality does occur, we have, we have plans at our disposal.
And we do have a table topper, you know, emergency exercise in the works. Um, so we're kinda waiting for the, the finals on that, but that's something that we asked, you know, for this year as well, cuz we were realizing we're not as prepared as we'd like to be, for sure, so.
Right, thank you, Mayor.
Um, and, uh, I apologize for being late, thank you for coming. I, I do wanna say that, you know, we have that unique situation of being two separate districts, uh, for, for a lot of good reasons, but a lot, you know, some cities have a fire department within their city structure, you know, and so there, there is already that kinda built in um, working relationship, and we're two separate entities here. Um, so I'm just so excited, you know, and, and the conversations have been evolving over the years, especially around wildfire mitigation, um, fire safety, that, you know, we are pretty much in lockstep on our messaging now, which I think is so critical, you know, because these are, you, you know, any sort of change management, the, the more you hear a consistent message, that person, and that guy, and that girl, and, you know, it really starts to sink in and resonate with people, and, and we're speaking the same language, and, and the district's speaking the same language, I think that is so important, um, for us to make any, you know, headway in this issue, so, I really, you know, appreciate that. Um, and I, I did have one question about medical calls. Um, I was talking to somebody at, at the station recently, and, and mentioning how, you know, you do get people walking in. Um, do you keep stats on that of walk-ins? Okay, cuz that, that might be helpful for us at some point, you know, especially with, not so much with the city, but with our, you know, vision implementation team, you know, and, and the medical, issue that keeps hanging out there, if people want more medical services here, and they keep dwindling and, and dissolving. Um, but I think one of the issues, uh, a missing statistic is people, um, not understanding how many people are walking into the fire station, and that's not really a normal thing people do in a, in a larger community, you know, they go to an urgent care or something like that, but, uh, you know, I, I think when, um, you know, medical company's looking to place a, you know, an urgent care or some other facility here, and they're look, they're drawing statistics from people's zip codes at the, the ER or something like that, and if they're not, you know, realizing that you're getting a lot of walk-in traffic, um, I think that's kind of a missing piece in that, that puzzle, but, um, I'm glad that you're, you're keeping that, I, I don't have a use for it right now, but I, I think that might be useful. If we can ever get more medical providers instead of fewer here.
I, I think we'd really like to get some of those stats on, that you, you said you might have on the city initiated, um, but maybe broken out from your other fifty-five square miles or whatever.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-three and a half.
Two-two, two-one.
And, and I, I should let everybody know, uh, my blood pressure was really high one day, and I walked in just to get my heart checked out there, and so I appreciate you guys being there, that was two thousand eight or two thousand-
And I walked in, now I have a pacemaker, so there you go.
Good. Um, I, I wanted to make sure that you guys knew from, from my personal perspective here on city council is, um, a large part of my conversations out in the community right now are about fire insurance and, you know, fire mitigation, building hardening. Um, boy, we're lucky, aren't we? And, I like to tell people that, yeah, we're lucky, but we're also, I think this community, um, your organization, our organization, working together, um, with the Forest Service and other local entities, Blackbeet Ranch, and, um, even Cloverdale to a certain extent. Um, we kinda overlap each other, O D F. We, we're actually in a, in a place where we have kinda like five, those five organizations all overlapping each other, and I think that we're very fortunate in that. But I also, um, like to remind people that there was only four cities in Deschutes County, and three of them had major fires right outside their city limits or within city limits, and we did not. And, um, I think we need to credit ourselves as a community that we actually do work hard, uh, in some really expansive fire mitigation around town that you guys do, the, the Rangers do, the O D F that is part of. And we all do it together, and we should, we should take some pride in that. Um, and we, we shouldn't say, oh yeah, we're just lucky. Luck is part of it for sure, but we also work hard for this, and I think that, I think we should take some credit in that. Um, cement these relationships even more, get our plans together, and just keep, keep doing what we've been doing. And I really like to hear about the, um, buffer space and the grants, the opportunities that we might be able to work together on. I know Paul's been doing that for a long time, um, but I think it's kinda time to bring that out of just staff level and kinda bring, raise it up so people know what we're doing, and so we, we can take some of these minor victories of being a little lucky and say, hey, we're, we're working for this, you know, we're, it's not just a complete accident. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And on a slightly different note, if you walk around the building, you see some of the trees have been tagged with the ubiquitous orange marking, which trees don't know what that means, but we do. And, that's because the council and the city have made a decision to implement fire standards that we're talking about having people implement around their homes and things like that, here at City Hall as a demonstration of what that means, so some trees that are, we're probably gonna get some flack, some trees are gonna come out, some that are really pretty. But, they're, they're all danger trees from a fire perspective. And, and the goal here is to show what it looks like, and so somebody can see it when we say to them, this is what you need to do around your home, this is what you should do around your home. And even some of these things are better than none of these things. So, um, it's like I say, I can do anything I want to in my home, and I'm going to, but my neighbor's house will burn mine down, there's no doubt about that. So, I'm gonna make him pay my fire insurance.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, anyway, but it, it's, I mean, that's, there are little steps there, but I, I guess that my last question is if an individual in the city, and I, I've heard this said, but how does one go about asking to have some kind of a inspection done around their house by your group, knowing that they're busy and there's a lot going on, and a lot of us think we really don't wanna bother you? How do, how does that happen?
They can, they can call our front office and, and our staff, and, and schedules those right away, so.
Okay.
They'll put you right in touch with somebody and schedule those.
Cuz I've had that asked of me, and that, it's always followed by, I really don't wanna waste their time.
It's a free service.
It's, it's not a waste of time.
Yeah, I know, and I, yeah.
It's really important to have people do, if that's, if they wanna do it, they should call.
To me, um, we've talked about Fire Corps' role in these home inspections. But our fire program is, Fire Corps program is unique in this state, and they do a lot more than that, some of it potentially making our community safer on the medical side. It might be beneficial to share some news about the other things they do with our partners.
There, the car seats inspections that we do, they teach CPR courses. So, if businesses or any entities need CPR courses, they're doing CPR first aid courses that their Fire Corps does. Um, they're doing smoke detector and CO detector inspections at replacements. Uh, so we do those on a, quite a regular basis as well. And, the, the events that we're doing, the charitable things, for the other organizations that are out, when we have a chance to do the, the Fourth Fest, when we do those, we're, that volunteer program is an operational, also not the Fire Corps, but the operational side of the volunteer program. Also, we rely on as, as responders, so, we're currently doing sometimes one or two uh, new firefighter courses per year. So, anybody that's in the public that's interested in joining, can, you'll have one or two courses to get them trained if they wanna respond. If they wanna do only medical, they can do only medical. If they wanna do only fire, we have the ability for them to do that. So, the, the Fire Corps, they do, uh, our A E D program around town. So, there's, there's hundreds of A E Ds that the, the Fire Corps has worked on grants to get those to purchase for businesses, and inspect them all throughout town. So, which, is, if you're thinking about all those different programs that we, we, it takes a there's almost fifty of them, uh, we're up to forty-eight members in the and, and then we have another over thirty to thirty-five in the operational side of the volunteer group. The largest in Oregon.
And you like volunteer.
One of the largest on the West Coast.
Yeah, not amazing.
For, for our small community, which is amazing. It's one of the things that drew me here, is like, so impressed by the level of service that our, our residents.
Tony, may, maybe you also, since we're talking about, um, proactive approaches, uh, to wildfire. One of the, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with what, what the district under Tony's leadership is doing with, with, uh, Fire Marshal Puller and, and Steve Lord, Stephen Lord. And that is, we found that with our houseless population, we're surrounded on three sides here by national forest. We don't have tents downtown, and the reason we don't is not because of, of, of being mean or whatever, but we have forests where they, they, they can dwell in the forest. They are not invisible. And, one of the things of, of a forest dweller, if you will, and I don't mean that in a disparaging way, is a houseless person, many times, the, the calls that we're getting in that surrounding area of the national forest are human caused. Sometimes by a houseless person making a mistake, cigarette in bed, campfire dead and out of control. One of the proactive things under Tony's leadership is, and I'd like Tony to explain this, is what we are doing with our partner agencies, going out into the houseless camps where they live, being gentle, but then giving them some free, uh, uh, things that they can do to, to mitigate, uh, if, if a fire starts.
And I think that's one of the wonderful things that the cities, that we're doing with the city and the other agencies, the US Forest Service and all the other groups, that, that group has become a very large group that, and, and Jordan, I think I, I like the term we came up with, the Sisters Community Coalition on houseless, that was my vote. But it's, but it's that group, we're, we're going out to try to partner, Jeremy Fields is, with the US Forest Services, has physically marked most of those, or as, they don't move, but he had that's the location on him, so. I've seen Chad pop in here, but, um, working with that group, uh, our safety kinda group for that committee is working on those things that we can get the message out to them. So, when we're going out to take the fire extinguishers out to them, and we've budgeted for fire extinguishers, we've budgeted for or common field smoke detectors, for the ones that have the trailers or the structures. Get out to them, give them those extinguishers, teach them, while we give it to them, how to use them with the P A S acronym. And then, the importance of having those detected in to early warnings. Hey, be careful of these, this is what we typically do, and try not to do these. So, if we go out, whether it's on medical call, or we're going, we have three dates already now, it, from asking of planning to get out and get those. Okay, that, we have new ones. Do they still have this? Those things to give it, give, and we're also giving them first aid kits. So, go out there, it could potentially alleviate some medical calls that we go on. So, if we can give them some basic first aid kits, there's, there's those things that we can give them while we're out. It's a, it's a great opportunity for us to kinda get out there and see, cuz we can plan on the potential also. Helps us know where they're at and what we could, may potentially be looking for, so.
Chief, what, chief, wasn't there already a fire that was put out by a, an extinguisher you guys gave out?
Yeah.
Do your horns, go ahead.
To them, they didn't quite put it out, but they kept it, you know, at bay a little bit more. Definitely helped, but it, it is a, it is an issue that we're looking at, and, um, it was, they, they were fortunate that there was somebody that recognized that there was something happening and, and had training, previous training to do that. But, but it is definitely a concern that we're looking at to to see, cuz ours is all about preparedness and being ready for it, so, we need to know when Ben does their thing, do we have a potential? Um, is there, are we gonna see more, are we gonna see less, or what's, what's gonna happen? So, we're trying to pay attention to what's happening over there too, and that's a great group that Chad and I are working on with Jeremy and the others to, to keep information of how that's, um, what's transpiring over there.
I, I have, uh, one topic that I wanna bring up, and I'm gonna try to weave it in with some of the other things that I've heard people talk about. Um, and, in this last topic that you have on the list here about our, our future capital needs. Um, we have a training area that we train our employees at. Um, we, our training is for not just our employees, but other, and other departments that we have, that we work with our partners. Um, and if we really do have some younger people who move into the community, there's that potential for training them if they wanna become firefighters. Um, uh, we know that we need to improve, do some improvements at our training center. And, one of them is that we need to have some, uh, uh, additional water to, to the site, we'll have to have um, upgrades with our, our power out there too. So, we just need you guys to know that there's a potential for that upgrade that we're looking at, um, in the future, in the next probably ten years or so, maybe even five years or less. So, that's one thing I just, we wanted to put, uh, as a bug in your ear about working together to try to improve that, and, um, see how we can-
There's some big ponds there with water.
Okay.
Just need a pump. I hope you don't suck any of the ducks or geese in, but-
No, we don't wanna do that, yeah. So, uh, just know that with the growth that we have in the community, not just in the city of Sisters, but even outside the community, um, w- we know, and with the, the strain that we've had with our numbers and our calls, we know that it's gonna increase. So, we're looking at how we're going to be able to provide, continue to provide service, and that's one of the things we need to, to keep in mind, um, additional apparatus that we might need to have, or other things, other ways that we need to, to provide, continue to provide good, solid service that we feel comfortable with and that meets our, our, um, our goals and our objectives for the, for the, um, fire district.
When, when does your bond retire?
Uh, twenty-seven, but if we, if we were to do something, it needs to be on the twenty-sixth November.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I, I think we had that topic on the, uh, for tonight, is, is that what you're thinking for Target?
Well, that's the things that we're looking at.
Okay.
What, what makes the most sense for us to go forward? We, we have a lot of changing things happening here, so, I mean, I feel like I've done some, but you guys feel free to jump in on your, your take on that, but, uh, we've just had so many changes here, and even in just the last year.
Yeah, that's right.
And you, we drive around and look at all the new construction everywhere, it's, it's, uh, makes me, is my, my job, and I'm sure the rest of the board is, looks at, okay, what, what do we need to do, cuz we're changing rapidly, it seems like, and how do we keep up with that, because, oh, we still need to meet our mission, and that's to provide the absolute best service, emergency service for the community.
And, and I think one of the things that taxing districts, can do, I've seen it done in other communities, uh, was involved with it in the valley. We tried very hard between the city, the fire district, the school district, park district, and utility not to run bond measures at the same time. Trying to space them so that we weren't stepping on each other's toes and forcing the public- Trying to space them so that we weren't stepping on each other's toes and forcing the public to pick between one or the other. So, you know, communication on that's real important. Not that I think we have anything out there in that horizon, but I I think that the more we know about what your plans are and what the school district's plans are, and it it probably is benefi- and the park district's plans are, it's beneficial to try to have some kind of cooperation between when these things are staged and what they do. Because I often find the public will look at one, so that's a good idea, but they look at two or three, then all of a sudden it it becomes scary and they'll either vote no on all of them or pick one, or and so it's not beneficial to any of the districts to do that. I just have a quick question on your smoke detectors out in the with our house on house population. Are you having much luck with them leaving the batteries in in the small RVs? Because we call them cooking detectors in a small RV.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
But we we try to go more on the CO side of it.
Yeah, good idea.
To give them the information on that, because they can, sure, I understand that they they cook, if they cook like me, then they're going off.
Yep.
But
They cook like me, they're going off.
But it's a CO problem, really, that that we try to keep them in for, because that's the silent killer.
Yep.
So it's all about the educational piece is when we get out there, it's our chance to educate them on the things that and not in a in a bad way at all. It's just giving them information. This is why it's important.
And have you looked at propane detectors as well?
Uh, no, no, not those yet, just.
You might want to think about that. They go down a floor level and for those who, some of these older rigs, you know, they can develop a propane, like a very small one. Usually you smell it, but it starts at the floor and builds up and by the if they light the stove and they haven't gotten down close to the floor, you could have a fire situation. So.
Good point.
Not not trying to spend your money. I'm just thinking aloud as a as the owner of one and been around it for a while.
So are you guys looking with the, your capital needs would be apparatus? And do you have, do you have the space at the current station for additional rigs?
We we do right now. It depends on what what you're looking at, but again, we're looking at what's what apparatuses would we potentially need right now? So we've replaced two of our chassis on our type sixes that are that one's back, got back yesterday and one will be back next week. And then the two ambulances that we're we're remounting one of them. So three of the chassis that the apparatus that we have, we've we've saved money by remounting them other than buying new. So on average, we can save between on an ambulance, about fifty to seventy thousand by remounting them other than a new one. Sooner or later, the boxes were out. So you may only get a a re- one remount on it, but it still saves us money. And the type sixes, this on our forestry rigs are the same way. We're replacing the chassis, which gets the beating in in the box and the the busyness stays the same box on the back and just remounts on a new chassis. So we've done two of those and we'll be doing one of the ambulances in a brand new ambulance. So those are, we have a new engine that's, when you're looking at engines, so this is another thing that we look at is the the new engine that we have is taking us three years to have made. So it's not like you order an engine and it's here in six months. You're looking at three years, potentially longer. If you're gonna do a ladder truck, they're they're even longer. You're up to forty forty-some months to fifty-two months to have a have a ladder truck made. So those things for our planning is important. We're trying to gauge what growth is happening. Is it commercial structures, large structures, tall structures, all of these things that we're looking at to say what makes the most sense for us to to be prepared for four years down the road, five years down the road. And and that's just an initial. Those have to last thirty years. Twenty to thirty years on those pieces of apparatus. So we're, you're, you think you're UGB, we're looking at the same thing for those things that are that project us out into thirty years in the future.
And the thing with ladder trucks is that, you know, obviously we have grappled with the height restrictions on buildings, you know, obviously one issue, but they also, you know, do give that, you know, the chief and I were talking about this, you know, explaining that the the other advantage is that, you know, it's not necessarily vertical, but it's also horizontal that they can get out above something that you can't quite reach. Yeah, so.
Buildings are bigger.
Yeah.
A bigger.
Yeah, it could be a short building, but very big, you know. So again, something in, you know, business park, light industrial, something like that, where it could be really, you know, big building or, you know, even like the high school, something like that.
The the good news is that because we have the partners that we have, Black Butte Ranch and Cloverdale and even the Forest Service with their engines and we have engines available to our use if we need to. So and Black Butte Ranch has a ladder truck, so. So we, it's not like we don't have anything available, but at some point, we need to provide what we need.
Yeah, but they're they're talking when theirs is done of not replacing it. So it's almost a thirty-year-old piece of apparatus that will probably likely be retired in five years. So if that's the case, then that's all of these things that we're trying to weigh what makes the most sense for us to move forward.
A lot of bells and whistles on those ladder trucks.
Oh, boy.
There are.
Yeah, they're they're not, they're not cheap, right? By no means. It's and that's that's another thing too that comes up. It's the lo- the longer you wait, they they're not getting cheaper every year. They, you know, you have a sometimes five to ten or twelve percent increase annually on the cost of them. Now they're up to one point five to one point eight million dollars for a ladder truck. So those things are very expensive.
In discussing UGB expansion and listening to your, what you've been saying and and those things, you know, Jordan said, you know, we have so many acres for this, so many acres for that in our UGB expansion. Do we need to consider land for a secondary or an ex- annex fire station? I mean, it because I look at your current lot and you're not necessarily landlocked. You've got some property in the back, but that's all used. So you can't go up, you can't go out, you can't go front, and you can't go back unless we close the street. So do we need to consider, I'm asking this of the council as well, the possibility, we're talking twenty years out, fifteen years out, that we may need to have an a new annex or something somewhere in that UGB expansion area to provide both equipment location and response? And I'm just asking.
No, it's a great question.
I've thought of that. I I don't have any idea. We haven't had that conversation that I recall.
Nope. But we appreciate, we appreciate your sensitivity.
Yeah.
I I just ran into that on the station there. My department, I just left up there. We had a fifty-year-old building that we were looking at what makes the most sense. Do we we spend fifteen or twenty million dollars on remodeling this? Or is this location over here on another piece of property a better idea to get our services and get us out on the street to respond? So we, I just had had those conversations and those that dilemma up there where I just left from, but but you should consider that.
Because I know when we've done our analysis and those sorts of things, I don't recall any discussions about emergency services location, because it's not a part of the city per se. And so I don't think we, unless I'm mistaken, really have kind of built that into our two hundred and some acre sort of a plan. And and the time to to know that probably for us is sooner rather than later.
During the land needs analysis, I think is when we engage about with the school district, with parks, or with parks, but other public facility needs, you know, we talked to Public Works, what we need land, you know, as part of the expansion. So I mean, it's not too late to consider. I mean, these numbers are still, there's a gross up factor and stuff like that. And it's not a lot of land, you know, school, schools need more acreage, right, than probably a fire hall with a couple bays or whatever the expansion might need. Your current headquarters, I mean, that's ten years, fifteen? I can't remember when.
What year was it?
Almost twenty now?
Yeah.
I guess if the bond is coming up then.
Yeah, the bond was re- it was remodeled what well, they moved ten years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a totally new building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, two thousand and eleven? No.
No.
It was before I got here.
No, it was before we got here. It was probably about two thousand.
Two thousand, okay.
Maybe in the late nineties. We could find out for you.
So Jordan, what I think I hear you saying is that, well, we've kind of had a number, we've thrown around two hundred and some acres, and you've heard me say, I'd rather bring in more land than less land. That's been my violin I've been sawing on since the day we started this conversation. So I just want to be sure that that we have, even if we put it in urban reserve or something like that, we have the ability to accommodate that kind of a growth should it need to happen and not hamper our emergency response services, because we didn't plan far enough ahead. And so I just want to go on the record on that.
Councilor Ross, I really appreciate what you're saying. And I think I think that that lends itself to that that we need to work together. I I said in the beginning that this is the beginning, I think, of of a of a great partnership. Of course, the partnership is there, but this is the first time that the boards and the councillors have ever met together. And I see that that this needs to be an ongoing dialogue between our two entities. A great point being brought up by Councilor Ross.
So I I have one more question. And just before we started, Peter Hoover, who's in the audience, came up and reminded me, this is another lens we kind of have to look at every day is, and just to curiosity, are you having any recruitment issues due to housing prices here?
Oh, boy.
Well, you know what? We just hired a fire chief.
Well, I I I drive by his place every day.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he found a home, but
Yeah, that's a definite concern. I mean, we have that on every hiring process that we had take place and since the time I took over is we we actually had one that turned down because he he said the housing prices were were too high in here and he was concerned about that. He was concerned about the insurance and the housing costs. So those were the two major issues for him. And then and firefighter wages, I mean, we set wages and we pay very well. I mean, we really do pay very well comparative to most places. We try to stay in that third position here.
In the county.
And that's the board's goals, one of the board's goals. So we have, we, our strat plan has all of these things in it in our goals that we that we try to update annually and make sure that we're still on track. And that the recruitment and retention is major everywhere. I just the previous one we had, I had up there was that that thing. It depends on where we want to be, where where an agency wants to be. Do you want to be above the fifty percentile or where you want to be to hire the the best people? And we want the best people, so. Because it's important for us.
You're probably in the same situation we are, that as a public employer, you're competing against the other public employers in Deschutes County. So, you know, you're in that third position, you know, so are we, but, you know, we're hiring planners and public works employees and stuff that could get jobs in Bend or Redmond and they pay more, just shoots county.
What does that mean third position is like?
I'm guessing it's what agencies pay.
Look at all of the competing agencies in central Oregon. I don't know if you get one of you guys want to.
Yeah, so we have we have Bend and then we have Redmond and then us. So in the third position in terms of we pay, Ben pays the most, Redmond pays the next, and then we play the third. And then there's Jefferson County and Black Butte and and Cloverdale.
So we always try to stay right in that that.
Yeah.
No, excellent, excellent.
The the other thing.
That's what you mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that we have done in the, just since I've been on the board is we've the the rule that we tried to follow is that people who work for the fire district have to live within the fire district. And we've dropped that. We just say that they have to be here within a certain amount of time if there's a call. And so that that was one thing that we were willing to negotiate with Tony. Tony chose to live here in town anyway. But that's that helps, that helps us to to relieve that that stress that they don't have to be within the fire district. To be in the fire district, that means you'd be at Camp Sherman rather than Cloverdale. And Cloverdale is closer, right? The kind of doesn't make any sense, but it was what was on the books and we've changed that. Yes, yes.
It's called reality.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know. Well, we are past seven o'clock, but it was a great conversation, so well worth the extra time. Did anybody have any final comments or anything they wanted to get in there?
Want to thank you for the time. Really appreciate you having me.
Yeah. Yeah.
We welcome that.
Very, very glad that we were able to make this happen and I really appreciate you taking the extra time to do this. So with that, we're adjourned and our city council meeting, you want seven fifteen? Start at seven fifteen.
To order the regular meeting, sorry, of the city council for March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Join me if you'd like in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Do I have an approval of the agenda and possibly with an amendment?
Do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Yeah, let's do roll call.
Let's do that first. Here.
Council President McDougal.
Here.
Counselor Frieden.
Ask me.
Counselor Ross.
Present.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here.
Now. Would somebody like to do an approval of the agenda?
I will. I I moved to amend the agenda to add a Parks Board appointment under other business and approve the amended agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First up, our visitor communications. Do we have any?
Here's one, Peter Hoover.
Okay, and we always tell people that, you can sing along, Peter. Keep your comments to around three minutes if possible and state your name and where you live.
All that good stuff.
Yeah.
Peter Hoover, the Director of Sisters Habitat for Humanity, two two one South Ash Street here in Sisters. I just wanted to come before the you maralettes and council members to give you an update as to our Larch or Adams Commons project. You will start seeing some activity there shortly. We have entered into an agreement with CEC to put the electrical service underground, which is part of the requirements. And we have also put out for bid and received bids for the infrastructure development. So timeline, we anticipate, well, we haven't heard of the date from CEC yet, but that'll be starting relatively soon. And then infrastructure development dirt will start to be moved probably in the neighborhood of June first. So we're excited about that. I also wanted to, well, and before I move on to the next topic, I want to say thank you to the council and to the Planning Commission for the support and guidance and assistance that you've given us in bringing those projects to fruition. I know I've done it on many occasions before, but I do want to in particular point out Mr. Woodford and his staff for the assistance that they have provided. They have always been accessible, always been clear, always been concise and always been responsive. And so it's been a pleasure working with them. As you may have noticed on the national level, there are some questions that are being created about funding. And so I wanted to relate to you that our funding looks secure at this point. Sisters Habitat for Humanity is not heavily dependent at all on federal funding. And so it most of our grants come through the state of Oregon and are financed through Oregon bonds that are issued. And so consequently, if that was a concern of any of the council, I wanted to let you know that at least knock on wood thus far, that does not look like it's going to be an issue for us. There is, of course, heightened competition for grants that for private foundations and corporate donations and so forth that we are experiencing already and that we anticipate that that is going to intensify. We are starting expenditures on the project, so if those who have awarded grants might have opportunity to move forward with grant awards, that would be appreciated. So but I don't want there to be any concern out there if with what's going on at the federal level, that's going to impact our project adversely. That does not appear to be the case at this moment. We are still looking at a June of twenty twenty-seven final completion date, hopefully before then. And to remind the council, we're looking at twenty-five homes, absolutely, will go in there. Nineteen affordable, six workforce. And then if we can make the magic happen, we'll have one fully compliant ADA home that will be as part of the project as well. So thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Another, one other. Okay.
Another, one other. Okay, thank you. First up on our agenda is an audit report. And Joe O'Neill. And the auditors from Umco Valley Financial, it looks like.
Yes, thank you very much. So Steve Ducher from Umco Valley Financial is on the line here with us. He'll present the audit report, go over some of the letters and I think present a couple other, a couple other items of note from the fieldwork. So without further ado, Steve, you want to take it away? Can you hear all right?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you through our recorders.
Yeah, give us just, just a minute, please. I have the US, is it the USB one carry? That one?
Steve, can you say something for us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. How's that sounding?
Now we can't hear you at all.
Well, can you hear me now?
All right, we got you back a little bit, but.
Okay, okay.
We just tried that one.
You know, I'm glad that I'm not the only one that struggles with technology.
He is, he's coming through the computer. Give it one more, one more test, Steve, please.
How are we doing now? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? And you hear me now? How are we doing now?
Um, it, yeah, it's the same. It's just, it's only coming through our computer here, not our speakers. So it's just, uh, not a very high volume. It'll huddle up.
Yeah. Turn up your computer.
I'll talk as loud as you want me to.
That's good.
I mean, that's probably workable.
Okay.
Okay, we, we did.
All right.
You're great. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm going to share my screen right away here. So say something if you can't hear me, please. Okay?
Yeah, you're good. You're loud and clear now. So fire away.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Now I'm going to struggle with where to go here.
It's all good.
Okay, you can see the screen I got here?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you guys for having me. Just wanted to let you know that the audit went very well. Joe and company do a great job there, which is not exactly the norm these days in some of our experiences around the state with auditing. So you guys should be very proud of your team there. I'm going to go through just a few slides on what it is that we do in an audit and then go over a few of the schedules and statements. And then open it up for any questions you have. But if you have any questions throughout, just stop me and I'm happy to try and answer those right away. So let's see, so an audit, what, people have a lot of different ideas about what an audit is. But we are doing a financial statement audit of local governments in the state as required by the Secretary of State. Rules there. That is different from a forensic audit or fraud audit in which the focus is on fraud. That is not the case with what we do. Our job is to essentially issue a report that says that the financial statements are without material misstatement. We are required to look into fraud throughout the process, but that is not our focus. However, in your guys' case, we did not find any indications of fraud or any other unscrupulous kind of accounting or reporting. So happy to report that. What we do do is make a lot of inquiries at first, and you guys are subject to that a little bit yourselves because we are required to ask questions of city government officials, administration folks. And the reason for that is that we need to get and make sure that we have a good understanding of what is going on at each local government and in your case at the city. Part of that is just so that we know what other questions we should be asking in terms of, are there new debt that we should know about? Were there capital asset purchases? Are there, are there contractual agreements that we need to report on? But ultimately, our primary focus is on internal controls. It's a big deal in auditing. And we need to understand what goes on at the city in terms of internal controls. These five different items here are the different elements of internal controls. Most everybody thinks of internal controls as pretty much policies and procedures. But they are surrounded, those policies and procedures are surrounded by these other items that are just as important, if not more important than those policies and procedures. So we get a good understanding of internal controls and that helps us focus on where there may be problems in, in reporting areas, along with understanding what other, from the answers that you guys have given us in terms of the other inquiries that we've made. We also record or make sure that we understand what the city is doing to record and summarize the financial information so that we can analyze the financial data. And we do that along with assessing risks for ourselves related to how can things go wrong with our audit? What, what might cause us to issue a report that says that things are, that the financial statements are without material misstatement? When in fact, there are material misstatements. So we, we spent some time looking at that and, and what additional procedures we may need to complete to reduce our risk to an acceptable level. A lot of the procedures we do have to do with testing the accuracy and legitimacy of transactions, verifying account balances, like the bank account balances, debt balances, account payable balances, account receivable balances. We look at a wide range of records, various files and other financial reports, payroll reports, for example. Depending on what it is that's going on, we may need to do testing of compliance, as in when you get a grant, what compliance requirements are there? And then we need to look at and test, examine whether or not those regulations were complied with. We do that as a requirement by the state statutes, but when there are federal awards, then we also have to do what's called a single audit. That is not something you guys were subject to, but I'm going to explain just briefly what that is in, in just a second here, but the other things that we do are issue reports. We issue our standard report required by governmental accounting standards board. We issue a report required by the Secretary of State and the minimum standards issued by them. And again, when required by the federal government, we issue reports, single audit reports. Things that we do that are not necessarily part of the audit, but we do them typically for local governments in Oregon is prepare the financial statements or at least assist in preparing them. We have to be very careful that we aren't auditing our own work. So what we do is put the financial statements more or less together and then provide a draft for you guys to look at, your staff to look at and give us the thumbs up when they think those are good. And then we go back and complete our final audit procedures. The other thing that we typically do is make these adjustments that take us from the budgetary basis of accounting, or what's called modified accrual basis of accounting to a full accrual basis of accounting, which is what two of the statements that we'll look at here in a minute are based on, along with two more for proprietary funds. So we do adjusting entries as well, and we have to be very careful that we're not auditing our own work there as well. So this is the auditor's report. You find it on page A in the report. It is a clean audit report. It is unmodified. That means there are no statements saying that, except for blah, blah, blah. So on all opinion units, which are these items listed in the first paragraph here, those are opinion units. We found no material misstatements in the financial statements. Any adjusting entries that we felt needed to be made, we provided those as suggested audit adjustments. And then we put the financial statements together. And again, we're issuing a clean audit report. Single audit, again, I just want to talk about this briefly. The city is not required to do one this year. Anytime a government expands more than $750,000 of federal awards, they are required to do a single audit. And so again, the city was not required to do that. I would go over more in greater detail if that happens in any year in the future. But for now, you're good to go with that. I wanted to go over how to read the financial statements. It's called an annual comprehensive financial report. That is a bit more exclusive, I guess, than the typical financial statements that most cities of a size of Sisters issue. They, most cities don't have the introductory section or the statistical section in the back of the financial statements that make it an annual comprehensive financial report. By doing that, you make yourselves eligible to get the certificate of achievement that is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association. And that is a certificate that you see in the financial statements. Anyway, so there's the introductory section, includes a transmittal letter, the officials list there, the organization chart and that certificate of achievement. The auditor's report is next. Management discussion and analysis is a great section. It, it gives, gives you a high level overview of not just the this numbers of the financial statements, but also kind of an understanding of how they're presented. A little bit longer than what I'm going to go over here, but that's a great place to read if you really just want to get a high level understanding of financial statements. So then we have the basic financial statements, which are two different elements of that. The first is the government wide reports. And they're presented on a full accrual basis, the statement of net position and the statement of activities. They're called government wide because you won't see funds there. What you will see are governmental activities and business type activities. The business type activities typically are utility funds, but they're not reported on a fund basis, but rather as in a activity level. And they are again, full accrual. And we'll go over what that means just briefly in a minute here. The next set of financial statements is the fund financial statements. There are two sets of those, the governmental fund financial statements and the proprietary fund financial statements. The governmental fund financial statements are reported more or less on budget basis. The proprietary fund financial statements are full accrual statements, not budgetary type statements. So there's a distinction there that you need to be aware of when you're looking at these things. Then there's the notes to the financial statements. Those have gotten rather lengthy, especially with the note related to pension and OPEB disclosures. Those are about 16 pages long just for those disclosures and required to be part of these financial statements. After the notes, we have the required supplementary information. That's a very specific set of statements that include the budget versus actual reports for the general fund and any major special revenue funds. And then several schedules presenting pension and post-employment benefit information. After that is supplementary information where all the other financial schedules, including combining statements of non-governmental funds and combining statements of the enterprise funds, along with all the budget and actual schedules for each of the funds in those combining statements, along with any budget versus actual major debt service and major capital projects funds. That's a mouthful and it's really frustrating for me in a lot of ways because it just adds so much complexity, the whole thing, but those are all required in, in those places and in those forms to meet the GASB, the governmental accounting standards board criteria for reporting. The next section, other information, various, various schedules there, usually for cities, just any debt schedules that report. We add those that show each of the debt payment schedule or debt payment amounts in detail for each liability, long-term debt liability that exists for the city. Again, then the statistical section, which is again, the, for the comprehensive financial report, a fairly lengthy set of schedule or informational statements, most of which are 10-year history. So pretty interesting if you go back and look at some of those and, and read through and look at some of the 10-year history that's captured in those statements. Pretty good information if you're looking for trends. And then last but not least, reports required by legal and other regulatory matters, specifically in this case, the Oregon Auditor's Report. So that's the financial statements as they are presented, very succinctly presented. We're going to look at a few of the statements in the financial statements and then I'll just open it up for questions. So this is that statement of net position that is the full accrual financial statement. You'll see the governmental activities I mentioned and the business type activities with the combined total. It's more or less a balance sheet, but it doesn't ever have totals for, that show the assets equalling the, the liabilities in that position. You'll also see these deferred outflow of resources and deferred inflow of resources. Those are relatively new fangled type of account that pretty much only have to do with pension-related items. And we get those. And we get those amounts straight from PERS and, uh, actuary reports, um, for OPEB. Fairly lengthy list of things that could be consolidated a little bit. We can just show a single number for receivables. And then detail those out in the notes a little bit more. Um, we're just about to the, to the point where this doesn't fit on a page anymore and that's when you start. Condensing things down, but. Uh, we're going to try and just keep it all presented in this format for, uh. Simplicity sake, um, so that everything's presented in a single place. Um, very quickly, the net position fifty-eight million is up from fifty-four million the year before. Uh, the total assets of sixty-five million is up from sixty-two million the year before. And the city's liabilities of seven million is down from seven. Seven point two, seven point one, down just a bit, uh, for that. Uh, again, resulting in a net position that is increasing. Statement of activities is a profit and loss statement, again, based on government. Government-wide, so you have a governmental activity section and a business-type activity section. Um, this statement is one of the more frustrating ones for me to. Show people and present because it is. Un unlike a profit and loss where revenues are at the top, uh, the first thing presented. This thing has expenses presented first for the governmental activities by program. And then program revenues. And then the net expense or. Uh, change in that position for each program. Most governmental activities are not expected to make a quote-unquote profit. And a lot of times if there is a profit there, it's because there's. Some sort of a operating grant that's been received or in the case of. Streets, a lot of times capital grants. So what we do see in the business-type activities, of course, we're hoping to see a profit of some sort. Uh, or at least break even on those, uh, type of activities. On the lower section, then general revenues where the property taxes and franchise fees and. Other taxes and fees, all those are reported down here with the change in that position reported there. Again, it's important to remind you that I think that this is not budgetary basis, um. We go back real quick to the statement of net position. The biggest numbers on here are capital assets. And pension liabilities. Usually, and those are not budgetarily related at all. Um, you, you. Do capital outlay as expenditures. Um, for budget purposes, but for these full accrual. Statements, we have to take those capital outlay expenditures and add them as an asset. To the city so that you have a completely different, um, reporting model here. The next page balance sheet is more or less, this is governmental funds balance sheet. And it is more or less on a budgetary basis. You don't usually see balance sheet, mostly what you see is your budget versus actuals. So I think it's always important to look at the balance sheet from time to time. Cash being of course the most important thing, um. And then those cash balances are offset up and down by some receivables and some liabilities. To end up with your, uh, fund balance. And these, each of these are the major funds identified as major by the amounts of. Assets, liabilities, revenues or expenditures, um, reported for each of the funds. Non-major funds end up in this column here and then the totals here. This is the budget versus actual report back on page fifty-two, so just after the notes. This is a standard budget versus actual report. And pretty easy to read, um. Revenues, expenditures, other financing sources is where your inter-fund payments, transfers in and out. And other payments are reported. Then the net change in fund balance with your ending fund balance, um, actual column. And then the original budget and final budget amounts with the variance here. You guys are in pretty good shape with your fund balance, um. It's, it's always nice to see a city that has a fund balance that, uh, is not. Edging towards running in the red, which we've seen. A fair amount of this last few years as, uh, cities are. Handling the range of challenges that exist and have existed with things like COVID and all of that, but. At any rate, that is my, uh, report in a nutshell. Any questions?
He's kind of squeaky clean there, Joe.
Pretty good. Yeah, yeah, it's. A lot of numbers, so. Yeah, great to work with, uh, Steve and his team and obviously, you know, really proud of our team. Uh, we rely on. Um, our little finance team to do all this work, every single number. Uh, that is in the budget, that's in every, uh, worksheet that we have is is all result from them and and input by them, whether it be. Automatically or, you know, reviewed, uh, or input manually. So, um, yeah, yeah, really proud of, uh, of our team.
You should be. Yeah, you guys do a great job, honestly.
Steve, this is Michael Creedon. Historically in the past, I've asked if you could give a letter grade to our finance department, what would you give them?
I would give them an A.
That's the first B plus plus, the most I ever heard before, so that's.
Well, you know, they do a great job, uh, like I said, and, um. You know, this is what I can say is that there, there is always going to be room for improvement. Uh, particularly in terms of internal controls. What we know about internal controls is that you have a limited number or amount of resources that you can put towards. Internal controls and improving internal controls. The focus is almost always, and this is something that I, I love to talk about, but I hate to bore people with it. So I got to be careful, uh, but. You know, the focus usually with internal controls is on who's opening the mail, who's recording the receipts, who's. Um, posting the receipts, um, who's making the bank deposits. Who's writing the checks, who's signing the checks, uh, those kinds of things. And those are all important, uh, but what we are beginning to be aware of more and more is that. Um, reconciliations of. Um, most significantly, bank account, bank reconciliations. But also payroll liabilities are really important and having, not just doing those, but two things. Making sure that they're getting done, either they might be on the list of things that are supposed to be getting done. Uh, but making sure that they're getting done and making sure that they're getting done accurately and properly. Um, what we call monitoring. Um, we have seen and not at the, at your city so much, but at several other governments. We audit like ninety governments now around the state. And we are seeing a really bad problem with certain rate reconciliations, um. Either where the reconciliation is done and then the numbers change. Um, and so the reconciliation is no longer valid. But the record, the initial reconciliation was signed off or approved, everything is good. Well, that's not very useful if amounts change after you've done a reconciliation. Um, so you have to be aware of things like that and and the reason it's important those are is because. While you guys don't look at those balances in your, in your monthly or quarterly reports, budget versus actual reports. If anything on the balance sheet is out of whack, like payroll liabilities, for example. That almost always means that some revenue or expenditure amount is out of whack as well. And those monitoring procedures, those reconciliation and monitoring procedures. Are really important in terms of, uh, making sure that the rest of the numbers are accurate. Um, we, we have a district that, um. For a couple of years in a row was messing up with their bank reconciliation, or sorry, their payroll liability reconciliations. And it had to do with health insurance, uh, expenditures. And they had messed things up so that the expenditures related to health insurance for new employees. Wasn't getting recorded as an expenditure. And they weren't looking at their payroll liabilities. They were just looking at their expenditures going. Wow, you know, we got, we got a lot more money than we realized we did, or not money, but fund balance. We have a bigger fund balance than what we thought we did because our expenditures are just, they're great, they're low. Well, they almost spent themselves right into the red without realizing it. And it's because they weren't doing a good job of reconciling their payroll liabilities. Um, so. You know, and and that goes back to internal controls. Long story short, internal controls, uh, can always be done better. You have limited resources. It's, it's that one of the other internal controls that's is really. Valuable in, in limiting the risks of, uh, erroneous reporting, if you will. Um, is identifying those risks like I talked about briefly at the beginning of my, uh, presentation. Risk assessment, identifying those things that are. Present the greatest risk in terms of. Not so much about fraud, but about financial reporting errors. Those, that that risk assessment of where things could go wrong and what we can do about them. And do it in a way that's not costing you a lot of money to do it. Like you don't have, you don't have the budget to hire another. Two people just to do internal controls. So designing and and implementing controls at all those different levels is really important. And so, you know, uh, it, that story, um, those stories that, that information. Is the one area where almost everybody can always do a better job of. Uh, of doing things in the finance department. Um, and it's just that it's an area that's ongoing. You have to continually be thinking about. Where are our risks and what can we do to minimize those risks? So. Hopefully that has some meaning to you guys. Um, if not, I'm sorry. Uh, but it, it is a, uh, you know, in in terms of A plus, B plus, whatever. Uh, what you guys do, um. Is, is a material, um, and again, it could be better, but it's pretty dang good. Um, particularly when we compare it with what we're seeing in other places.
Thank you.
Just one last thing, uh, briefly, and that is that, uh. I'm a big proponent and have been that every so many years we should. Change auditors, not because the previous auditor wasn't any good, but because. A fresh face takes a fresh look and sometimes finds things that are missing or been missed because of. Familiarity. So thank you very much for the completeness of this report. And thank you very much for what you've done so far for the city and we're looking forward to work with you again.
I appreciate that and thank you all for having us, uh, here, uh, and doing the audit there. Um, and and I especially want to thank you guys on the council and, uh, Mr. Mayor for your volunteerism. Um, he, I, I was on the Rosenberg City Council for a few years a while back and. Oh, boy, do I know how much fun that is not sometimes. And so I really do appreciate your volunteerism. And, uh, just wanted to express that to you.
Well, thank you. I, I think we have a pretty good time though.
Yeah, good. That, it, it does help to have, uh, a bunch of people that are good to work together with. Doesn't always go that way.
Definitely. Well, yeah, really encouraged by the report and thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Thanks so much, Steve. You too.
Bye-bye.
Well, you had your first governmental accounting class. That was just like going back to school. That was great. Sorry, uh, I know those were kind of tough schedules to see. Um, I don't think that was intention, his intention to, to kind of just go through the, kind of the theme or the motions, uh, with those. With you all, but the, the, the financial report is available on our, on our website. Um, if you ever do take a look at that and wanted to sit down with me and go over what he's talking about. Um, I'm happy to do that. Those bigger numbers that he was talking about, the statement of net position. He's right, that, that really does include a lot of assets. So, you know, when, when Paul comes up in here and does. Uh, a receipt of, uh, a street or water sewer improvements, that all goes to our assets. That becomes ours, right? Um, and so that really kind of makes that number larger and larger and larger. You know, honestly, we don't have a lot of liabilities except for a little bit of debt. And a little bit of those, um, kind of those, those are post-retirement, um, liabilities that he's talking about, um, which is just the OPEB term. So those aren't very useful just because the number is so great for assets and so little for liabilities. It's a great position to be in. Um, but it doesn't, and from a budgetary standpoint, it probably doesn't mean a, a whole lot to us. So it's just mostly for their governmental, um, sta- standards board presentation.
Does that include real estate?
Um, yeah, it includes, it includes property taxes, yeah, or any, or any buildings we own. Those are all valued in our assets. Sure. Yep. Yep. Yep, everything.
But if we needed money, we couldn't go sell a sewer line or anything to.
Uh, I don't, no, that probably wouldn't work out great. Yeah.
It's part of our assets that we can borrow against.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's ours.
For sure.
Ours up here, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, and let that presentation sink in, i- if you have any questions or want to sit down, you know, I'm happy to do that. Their report is, is lengthy. Similar to the budget book and it can be a little bit dry, um, but there's some interesting things in there like he was saying. Um, a lot of it is very similar to our budget document in terms of, you know, budget actual columns, kind of like he was showing there.
So was there a transmittal letter?
Um, he, yeah, we do have one.
Just kind of curious, but it was, it was a clean audit, no finding, no.
Yeah, no findings, no material weaknesses or anything like that. Yeah, and just to touch on, you know, he, and I won't berate this, but, but.
I don't mind not getting a hundred fifty-page book to look at.
Okay. You know, internal controls and you can ask anybody that works here that, um, has a part in that, you know, we have. You know, with different things, someone different getting the mail, you know, Rebecca does deposits. Um, so we, we try to divide that up as best as we can throughout our office and and have, you know, all those things. Spread out, so you know, I'm not doing, you know, three things that are, you know, financially focused. I'm reconciling, I'm doing things on the backend and you just have a lot of eyes on things. So as you guys see payables, checks. And, and you know, that all matters, uh, tremendously when you're talking internal controls. So, you know, he's right, we do the best we can. Can we do better with internal controls? Of course, but, um, you know, we spread out. Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I mean, I write my own checks all the time. They clear everything.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, we ready for the quarterly now? Professor there. So Rebecca sharing her screen, she's gonna, um, kind of walk us through this and again, um. You know, for you new counselors, we're gonna, gonna spotlight kind of the, the. Summary of revenues and summary of expenses, but of course, interject with any questions you might have as we go through these. Um, so again, for, for some of the newer counselors, the, the most important thing here, at least to start is this beginning fund balance. And you'll see we have this twenty-four million and the twenty-two million dollars. And balance is kind of like the accumulated, accumulated income, if you will, for each fund. And it, during budget season, we try to aim for what that's going to be. Um, and ideally you don't want it to be less actual than it is here. So ideally you don't want this number to be like fifteen million dollars. That would mean that we kind of overshot expenses, undershot income, right? So this number is quite large and, um, if you look at some of the individual funds, you'll see that it, it's not a lot of big things. It's probably a lot of kind of smaller things, you know, uh, the policing services contract. If we were estimating that our overtime was going to be X and it was Y, maybe a little bit less. Um, you know, if we kind of, oh, thought that our expenses, again, were going to be a little bit more and they came in to be less, all good things. Um, so that's the reason for that. And if you'll notice, usually when he says red, negative numbers are red. But I purposely reformatted that so the negative numbers are green and and positive in this case. Um, okay, so the second thing we have here is property taxes. Now, the property taxes and this lapse rate for lapse percentage means, you know, halfway through the year, so fifty percent, right? Well, the property taxes obviously is at ninety-six percent right here for the U R A and the city. Um, and that means, well, we received, uh, I think eighty-nine percent of the city property taxes already as of December thirty-first. And I think um well over that percentage for the U R A. The U R A actually had a a tax increment that was a little bit higher um as a percentage increase than the cities. The cities ended up being like six point one percent, the U R A's was higher than that. Um, our our assessor doesn't give us a U R A estimate. He just kind of gives us the city estimate. So the U R A's a little bit, we apply the city percentage increase to that one. But um some years it's beat it by quite a bit, and that this year was that case. Um, you know, I didn't look specifically as to why, but usually it's for new construction, you know, in the urban rural area. Uh, things that come to mind are maybe, you know, ski in, uh, some of the bigger, you know, commercial construction projects. That are up and above that um that fixed base. Um, so you'll see that's pretty common for a second quarter uh review right there for property taxes. Um, franchise and park fees. So franchise fees, if you look mostly in the street fund, have been fairly steady. And remember, those are a utility, for the most part, utilities kind of pay the city rent for our right of way. So, you know, C E C, T D S, or just a couple of examples Republic does as well. We, the Water and Sewer Fund pay those. Um, and those have uh looked really steady and and met expectations. Uh, and then this is a little low because our park fees, as I've told uh you before, they come online in January. So you'll see that number kind of ramp back up for the third quarter. Uh, miscellaneous and other income, uh that was a little bit low on the on the city side. Because um we have kind of a, and I won't, you know, get into the details of it now, but there's a. When the U R A needs to transfer money, they kind of get it loaned from the city and it gets repaid back immediately to the city. Um, and that kind of appears in other income. Um, so that's a little bit low. But all in all, if you look through the rest of the accounts, it's it's a little higher due to that um. Kind of favorable four point seven or so percent interest rate that we have for all of the money that's in the bank. Um, so next going down here, local gas tax um has remained, let's see. Pretty healthy at sixty-six percent. You know, we'll see that decline here, um probably at the latter part of. Uh, the second quarter, beginning of the third quarter. But all in all, you know, we see that number at sixty-six percent or so, um, or excuse me, at fifty-one percent. Yeah, sorry, I'm cross-eyed. Um, th- this time of year. I mean, I think that the beginning of the summer, beginning of the fiscal year was was a lot busier. And um, you know, I think that we'll probably get close to our budget expectation of that. I think it's a hundred eighty-five thousand, a hundred ninety thousand. Um, so haven't really seen a big impact on that, honestly. Uh, that doesn't mean that it could have been, you know, higher, all things being equal, but. Um, that's tracking uh relatively steady. Uh, S E C income, the real sixty-six percent there. Oh, use my pointer to follow along. I need a line there or something. Um, you know, we projected a a lesson um, lesson historical number for S T C revenue this year. And it's done really well in the first half of the fiscal year. Um, it does taper off quite a bit in the third quarter. But it should uh progress quite a bit in the in the fourth quarter to what we expect. So uh that number actually should be pretty darn close, um all S T C funds totaled um to what we're expecting there. And you know, with developments in the Woodlands, Sunset Meadows, those are coming in fairly steady, um kind of hit and miss. But uh, but that's our main driver, that S T C income right now.
And those come in batches, right? It's not like one house at a time to kind of do four or five.
It's random. Yeah, it is. Yeah, sometimes they'll pay them all at once and um so just a a hard one to estimate. And then water receipts. So water receipts are also uh tracking high as a lapse percentage. Um, and that is also fairly indicative of the time of year. Um, you know, we increased our water rates, as you well know. Um, effective Ja- July one, and so, you know, we saw those those rates take effect and they were tracking with our expectations. And we'll see that um that sixty-two percent go down a little bit as the year goes on, but um that's been kind of tracking with expectations.
Because I fixed the leak in my main.
Yeah, that's mostly Gary or it would have been fifty-five, yeah. Um, that's pretty typical, though. Obviously, wa- water consumption is up. And then in the in the, you know, late second quarter, early third quarter, that'll be down and then back up again. And then sewer receipts are at fifty-one percent. We tend to see that number, if we've estimated correctly, be fairly steady throughout the year. And that's because you don't pay, you have a sewer meter, right? Even for commercial accounts, those uh sewer charges are a flat rate that are calculated, usually in May for the the next fiscal year. Um, transit room tax is is at sixty percent. Um, like I said in the notes there, uh interestingly enough, I think through January, they're up about six percent over last year. So um, you know, we've seen a pretty healthy year for for lodging tax, um which has been great. It's been good to see that, especially in these winter months. And then uh shared revenue and grants, that number is actually fairly low. Um, if you remember, largely because we have an eight hundred eighty thousand dollar um grant for East Portal. Which uh we got about half of that in the third quarter and we should get the the other half of that, if not the third or fourth quarter, uh after a lot of the other construction takes place.
You mean the soon to renamed city park with the transportation?
Yes, yeah, I'll probably mess that up every time. Uh, just a heads up there. Uh, so that's the revenue side of thing. Uh, no concerns there. Everything looks uh really positive. Um, and it's kind of flowing with our expectations for the for the year so far. Okay, ready to go into expenses? All right.
Appreciate you serving pie with.
Yeah, three D pie too. Okay, um, so uh not as many details here. But um, you know, definitely a lot of important things on the expenditure side. Cap outlay is fairly low. As you know, in a budget process, we've got a a lot of large capital projects um projected for this year. Um, and and we haven't, you know, commenced a lot of them quite yet. Um, you know, and I think I alluded to a lot of them in the description, but I mean, there's probably seven or eight of them that that we haven't really started on. Uh, the big portion of that seven hundred forty-four thousand is, I believe, East Portal, the first kind of. You know, tranche of payment that we gave for that contractor. So um, you know, between, you know, pump stations and and the roundabout contributions, all sorts of things, those will probably happen. Um, the third quarter, fourth quarter, and if not, then they'll spill over to the the next fiscal year. So uh Paul and his team and and our team are are tracking that. Um, so we've got a good good expectation of what that's going to look like at the end of the year. Um, but that that number actually might be quite low just because of the nature of um, you know, improvement projects. And then debt service, so um for our main bond, we have debt service payments in um November. And then in May, we obviously made the first one in November. That's reflected here. We'll make our second one um in May. And the remainder is that kind of uh that that debt repayment, that relationship that the city and the Urban Renewal Agency have. Um, so that represents that amount. Um, overall materials and services are down as a lapse percentage. You're, you'll see there about thirty-six percent here. As I put in the notes, in the water and the sewer fund, they're actually a little bit higher. Um, you know, this year, last year, we've just seen, you know, some improvements and repairs. Um, that have taken place that they are really usually unexpected. Um, in the water fund, it's usually attributed to water meters that we're buying that we don't want to be behind the eight ball on on having if they need to be installed. So we try to buy those uh he- ahead of time. Uh, but we'll just kind of track those as the fiscal year goes on, so uh no, no worries there or anything like that. And then personal services are actually low as a lapse percentage at, well, forty-one percent. Um, and that's largely too, you know, we've got a a couple of positions actually open um that we did not fill this year. We're kind of figuring out some logistics that we probably be filling here. Um, if not in the third quarter, in the fourth quarter. So that might go up a little bit more as a lapse percentage as the year goes on, but probably not a whole lot more. Um, and then grants and pastures, a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. That is the workforce uh grant from the city. Um, which hasn't been expended yet, obviously. Um, so that's got a a zero there. And then the interfund transfers um are at hundred percent. Interfund transfers for us are only for, um, if you remember, the city hall has its own debt service fund. Um, and all the other funds, it, well, all the major funds, general fund, water, street and sewer, all pay that fund to. The city hall debt service fund to pay its share of debt. That makes sense. So back when this was built, we took out a loan for it and the rest of the city utilities and and the general fund helped pay for that loan. For the city hall, for use of the city hall. And that loan will be done in twenty twenty-eight, so we're getting close to paying this thing off.
And then no more money out of the funds. Yay.
Right. Yep, so it's about twenty-five thousand to the general fund and then twenty-five split between water, street and sewer.
We can build the city manager's house, maybe.
That's right. Yep. Okay, uh, that is it. Sorry if that took a little bit longer than usual, but a lot of accounting.
Lot of pie charts.
Lot of pie charts.
Pie chart.
There was no apple, so it wasn't any pineapple.
Okay.
Have questions?
I don't have questions, but um Joe spent an hour with me yesterday just going through this because I wanted to make sure I was tracking. And um, you you know, it's just been on the budget committee and then seeing this. I mean, just, it's really nice, you know what I mean? It's it's clean and the numbers make sense to me. And you can explain anything I don't understand, and I really appreciate that.
Oh, of course, yeah.
But I mean, I hear the auditor talk about, I can only imagine what it looks like in some of the cities this guy's been to.
Oh.
How clear it is and easy to follow and, yeah.
Oh, good. Yeah, and that, you know, anybody else?
Tried to hire you from us, we're not letting.
Not going anywhere, but any, if if any of you want to sit down and and cover this, I'd be happy to sit down. It's it's good stuff.
The thing I always look at is I look at that percentage column and I look at where we are in the year and what that represents, you know, in terms of why. Look for the disparities. And to me, um, everything looks great. When we're kind of floating in the middle of the year and we're floating right down kind of the center line, that's where you want to be, some above, some below. So when you look at one of those and it's way out of whack.
Yeah.
You get really concerned, so I I appreciate the clarity. This, by the way, this is my twenty-third audit presentation. They don't get any better.
No, he did. He is, yeah, he did a good job. And also a touch, just real quick on the, he talked about the payroll liabilities a little bit. And so. What that typically means is if a, so we use a a contractor for our payroll services, we use A D P, you might have heard of them. And when we do payroll, a a a journal entry gets generated from A D P. And that is reviewed by me, and that includes payroll liabilities in it. And that includes um the health insurance that not only that the employees contribute, but the city also contributes. So those numbers have to tie out. Um, and that journal entry obviously has to tie out. And so um, and and Kerry has seen these before. They're like ten pages long. They're quite lengthy. But um they they include the liabilities in there, and then that liability, when it's paid by us, has to be, has to be offset, right? And so what's happening, I think, with with other jurisdictions is, number one, they might not have a good journal entry to to source from. And then wh- when they don't know if that journal entry is correct, they they might not be able to fix it. So um, that's when you get kind of out of out of whack a little bit, and your liabilities are the opposite balance of what they should be, and then you have, so. Um, that's part of the internal controls, honestly.
That's when it shows up in a in a good report or balance sheet. So that's why I would say percentages. Something's out of whack. Why is it out of whack?
Yeah.
Especially the more detailed ones that that are there. I mean, this is sort of a synopsis, but it. You know, I don't care whether it's a two million dollar budget or a hundred million dollar budget, the numbers all have to make some sense.
Yep.
Need to be in line with where you are in the year.
For sure.
I have a quickie question, if anybody doesn't mind. Um, he talked about the single audit and uh seven hundred fifty thousand federal funds. With our capital expenditures coming up, are we getting more Fed money to help with that, or are we doing all that with loans?
So, yes, in a year, I mean, to conceivably, that might be the case. If we get that second, you know, that eight eighty, right, from uh for East Portal or Park to be named. Um, yeah, that would be I get uh the requirement for a single audit.
Is that a lot of extra work for you or?
It is, yeah, and I've never been through one, to be honest. I think they're an extra five thousand dollars or or so. So if we can move that um to next year, that would be great. Same thing happened with um with ARPA. A lot of jurisdictions got into that that situation. Yeah, which we received those separate tranches, right, in separate years, so that worked out well for us. Um, I mean, I don't know. I I'm I've heard that the single audits aren't fun, but I mean, what audit is, so what whatever is what it is.
Well, Steve wasn't exactly um elected official material, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I mean.
Yeah.
That's on the audit to you and your team.
Yeah, thank you.
We're just, yeah, extremely proud of the work that you do and and um the city's come a long way in the last ten, twelve years and.
Yeah.
A lot because of you and your team, so thank you.
Yeah, for sure. No, appreciate it.
Make, you make our job easy.
Oh, likewise.
All right, next up is uh the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next on council business, a pavement maintenance project, uh with Knife River contract award.
Is it Knife River or Knife Rover?
Well.
Oh, you have Rover on there.
Oh, mine says Red River.
Look, look, look in that.
Oh, there. Can I, can I for over corp?
Wolf. There's a typo in it.
I don't see it.
Yeah. Well, whoever reads the motion.
Yeah.
Has to read it as read.
I guess we got Knife River in the staff report like twenty times, so percentage not too bad.
Laugh when I saw it.
But thanks for pointing that out.
I kind of like Knife Rover.
Okay, so this is our annual overlay contract uh for twenty twenty-fives. Came out of our pavement maintenance plan that was uh approved by the Public Works Advisory Board. And includes inch and a half overlay on McKinney Butte from Arrow Leaf to Brooks Camp. Uh, West Saint Helens Avenue from Pine to South Pine Meadow. South First Street, we got a little half block there by Euro Sports that hasn't been touched with an overlay for a long time. And then we got North Songbird Street and Parkside Lane down by Clements Park. And then we got a short section of Timber Creek Drive uh that we're doing, and that actually includes some. Um, some base work that we got to go and do, uh, just a lot of tree roots in that area. And then East Desperado Trail from Buckaroo all the way to the city limits. And in Five Pine, we only do the travel lanes, so the parking is their responsibility. Because in effect, when you think about it, I mean, that street acts as a parking lot more than a street. So that's the way that was conditioned when it was master planned. Uh, so yeah, this is with Knife River. They've done a great job with the with us in the past. Uh, we haven't got a schedule from them yet, but they're required to have this done by June thirtieth, or they will have L D's. Uh, five hundred dollars a day. And yeah, so we had two hundred thousand dollars budgeted. This came in higher. We had added some additional square yardage as well as the pavement rehab, which which. Took us up to the two thirty-six. We had six bids. We've never had six bids. Uh, actually, we had out of state contractors bidding it, so pretty happy about that. And as you can see in the bid tab results, you know, we had two or three bids that were really close, so. Recommend approval and some new asphalt.
Well, how often do we do this exercise? Is it annually that we're looking at what needs to be redone with overlay?
So every year, we use our entire toolbox doing chip seals, seal coats. Uh, flurry seals, overlays, crack seals. Uh, and then we have our streets on a twenty-one year rotation for overlays. So they get a maintenance treatment, they crack sealed every three and a half years, they get a maintenance treatment every seven years. And then that third uh seven takes us twenty-one years, they get overlaid.
Thank you.
You bet.
That's a really good reminder that you brought that up, though, because as we expand the city in U G B, we're just going to get more streets. And I imagine um we've done a lot of private street kind of tests in the past. And I'm not sure that they all worked all as well as we wanted, and so I hope we're going to keep most of the streets in our jurisdiction down the road. And it's going to grow our inventory and that this number's going to grow as that goes up too, as we get more roads, right? So anyway. I guess that was a comment, not a question. I apologize.
I'm in agreement.
We take a really close look every year. Uh, we go out and drive our entire system when we're coming up with the list, but we really look. when we're coming up with the list, but we really look at pavement age. When the road was built, how the road was built, when it was last overlaid, how thick was the overlay? How many treatments have been done? So a lot of data.
Yep.
Science goes into this, making this list. That's why we don't just do like a corner of town. Because all those streets were put in at different times. So we're skipping around town, really looking at when those roads are being triggered for the overlays.
Yeah. I would like to also point out for Paul that we get really, really high scores on our roads as compared to Ben Redmond, anywhere else in the county, so.
Definitely.
Right. What's the score? Like eighty? Isn't it eight, eighty?
Eighty, low eighties.
Yeah, I think it's eighty two now, right?
Which is way up there.
Who puts that score out?
We do.
We do.
No. No, no, there's, Paul can tell you sometime about.
We have a system where we put in, we go in and and rate the roads and it spits out a PCI. Yep.
And and I think the the thing that I want to compliment Paul and his crew on and the work that you do and staying ahead of it is that we don't have streets in bad condition because we stay ahead of them. And when you get into a bend or a redmond or a a number of other towns around here where that maintenance is deferred in lieu of some other thing in the budget. Uh, and it goes to the point where the road degrades where really you almost need to rebuild the dang thing. Um, we don't have any of that here and I, it's highly appreciated by me. And I rarely find a place I'm driving around town where the car goes. I could find a few, but those are the ones you're dealing with right now.
Yep, and let me know when you do. Yeah, because that drives me crazy too.
One in front of my house that all the people who speed going into the crossroads launch their car off, but that's.
Just need to make that deeper. Yeah.
And then with this project going on, will there, and we have East Portal and, I mean, the spring is going to be busy around town. Is it going to be busy that we should get ahead of maybe some messaging around that? Or is it a lot of this stuff will not be really blocking roads or getting in people's way?
Uh, it always, it's road construction, so it does get in people's way. Uh, we're really good about getting out in front with residences and businesses. But the general town, we could run something with Bill and the Nugget, just as a heads up, have it on our website. But we hang door knockers on everybody that's affected.
The one that will be probably the most disruptive to the community, and I use quotes, is the, the Five Pines piece.
That one and McKinney Butte.
So much, yeah.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
A lot of these are off on secondary streets. And uh, relatively small projects, except for the one on St. Helen's.
Cumulative, we have the the pump station.
Yeah, the pump station. Oh, the pump station is the one, that's the one that is going to be disruptive.
And then Barclay too.
Just Pine and Jefferson, not, not a big deal.
Not, no big deal.
But no, that's.
We have a four way stop. We don't have to worry about it.
How long is it?
Yeah, I forgot.
Take typically for the overlay to dry and we can drive on it again?
You know, it's a day.
About a full day?
Yeah, yep.
And is one and a half inch a standard amount? Or are we kind of?
It could be anywhere from one to three. We typically go inch and a half.
Okay.
Yep.
And will McKinney Butte be done after school's out?
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to do it in the last two days of school.
If not, if not, we'll look for a in-service day or something. Yeah, we don't want to be out there paving
Yeah.
during school.
Kids like.
Yeah.
Okay, um, can I get a motion?
I move to award a public improvement contract to Knife River Corporation Northwest in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and five dollars for the twenty twenty five pavement maintenance project and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary contract changes, orders and or amendments within a contract contingency amount of five percent of the contact contract award.
I second. Great backup singer.
Energy.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Northwest Park Master Plan. Um, approve agreement with NV five and Scott Woodford from Community Development.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, yeah, this is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve a professional services agreement with NV five for the design of the Northwest Park Master Plan in an amount not to exceed ninety seven and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. So just a quick background, this uh, this Northwest Park Master Plan was the uh, result of a council goal from twenty four, twenty five to conduct some outreach and develop out concepts, different concepts for the Northwest Park Master Plan that could includes a, could include a multipurpose recreational facility at that location. Uh, the city noticed and advertised RFP starting uh, in January twenty twenty one through February twenty 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 five and received six proposals, uh, which was a great uh, response to that request. And we got wonderful proposals. Um, we ended up interviewing four of them. Um, as part of an interview committee that we we uh, um, put together comprised of city staff, uh, a member of our Parks Board and uh, um, Jennifer Holland from SPRD were on the interview team. And from that, uh, there was, it was a tough, tough decision because there were four very qualified applicants, but uh, NV five rose to the top. Part of their, uh, part of what rose that made them uh, the winner were their ability to do things in-house. They have uh, quite a big uh, um firm, um, spread out over many cities throughout the Northwest. Um, as well as their outreach outreach plan, which consisted of uh, NXT Consulting, um, which uh, were the group that was responsible for the Sisters Vision Project. So they've got extensive experience locally. Um, so that was a plus for them. The the grant is being paid for partially by a uh, grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation District and then the remainder uh, will be made up from uh, our SDC fund for parks. I think the scope of work was laid out in the packet, um, and uh, the work that they're going to do. So if you have any questions, I can help answer them, but otherwise, uh, we're looking for your approval tonight.
Who were the other three firms? Do you remember?
Uh, Green, Greenworks, um, Sabo Landscape Park, uh, Landscape Architecture and uh, Cameron McCarthy. Yeah.
And the the group looked at, I'm not, I'm not familiar with NV five. I know the other three. Felt very strongly that this was, felt this was a good choice for us. Primarily due to the local aspect of of some of their team.
That and they're just their cap, their, their capability in their firm to to um, have do it all in-house, whereas some of those other ones were, you know, sub, subbing out.
When I looked at the project lists that they were submitting, it didn't look to me like what we were thinking about with uh, this particular area. But uh, I I think you've got a good committee. I have no problems with that process. I'm just kind of curious who the other ones were.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your forthcoming as to why this particular bid won over the others.
The NXT people, um, I remember when they were here, they couldn't wait to come back and work with us in another capacity. So it's kind of interesting that we're going to see them again. Um, they're going to be happy to come back to town and play, you know, so.
I just have a question on the on their proposal, um, estimating the time required of city personnel during the public engagement. And I noticed in the RFP, um, we had a requirement that the consultant uh, produces the materials and creates a webs, website. Um, but when I look um, at the proposal, they're looking at staff to do that. They're estimating two to four hours per week of these four items. I'm on page twelve. It it feels a little low to me. How do, how does the staff feel about the two to four hours a week? And can that be accommodated?
So it feels low to you, you said?
Yeah.
Um, I think it, oh, in terms of overall project management and involvement with the staff, it'll probably be more than that. Uh, but I think just relative to these particular items, in terms of supporting them with engagement, um, sounds about right. Uh, for just, uh, you know, advertising, uh, ranging venue detail, venue locations for community meetings. We can certainly create that project webpage on our city website, things like that. Uh, social media, uh, sites, updates, um, with links. That sounds about right for that portion of it, but I, you know, overall, it'll be more involvement, I would think, per per week than that. And ramping up at, you know, various times, it will ramp up to a little bit more than that. And in some weeks, it'll be a little bit less.
Sure.
But between uh, community development uh, and public works, I think there's, there's there will be plenty of uh, capacity to
Okay.
to handle this.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what? Um, Jordan just kind of pointed at me and said, you know what? We do a lot of that public engagement ourselves as counselors too. So we actually add to that number. Um, just in our service, which is fun. That's what we like to do.
Yeah.
Goal one, let's slam it again, you know? Public engagement.
We got a timely email today on requests for tennis courts.
I saw that. That might be discussed later. I have a feeling.
Give them that public engagement.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I think we're good for a motion.
I move to approve a professional services agreement with NV five for the design of the Northwest Park Master Plan in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 What was that, Gary?
Oi.
How do you spell that?
I'm going to look at council.
Going to get us in trouble. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that design, seeing that.
Yeah, interesting. All right, next up is a review and discussion of city council's twenty five, twenty six goals. Jordan will kick us off.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're back. Um, here we are with goal setting. Um, so you you met uh, there at the end of February, February twentieth. To discuss goals and great discussion, um, a lot of great ideas, a lot of continuation of existing uh, projects and initiatives that we're working on. And we had staff there to kind of update on where we're at with certain projects and initiatives and code updates. We we reviewed the public input from the open house and the online survey. And we kind of throw that all in the pot, have a good discussion. Um, and then we have a whole bunch of notes that we look at uh, to come up with what the goals are going to be for the next fiscal year. So a couple of things to point out here. Uh, first, just a reminder, these are fiscal year goals. Um, you know, something that maybe we can think about in the future, but again, we're setting goals uh, for the fiscal year, not the annual year for the cycle. So um, as you kind of get in, you know, in your mind about when do these goal, when the efforts start, when things start, you know, happening in terms of um, you know, putting numbers of budget numbers and things that that's uh, kind of comes with the budget process. And then once uh, we start the new fiscal year, we really get moving. That being said, a lot of these are continuation goals. So we're already kind of working on these things. And so some of these goals might be the next step in that um, journey uh, to implement uh, certain code changes or projects or programs. Couple of things to point out. Um, well, first of all, the the typeface did not translate over on the PDF. That's not our fault. Um, but it's been updated, so. It's really easier to read if uh, if you reload it on your computer. Um, so sorry about that. Blame Adobe. But the format's a little bit different. Um, again, we kept intact the major goal categories. Um, so the goals of wildfire and housing livability and growth, there's so on infrastructure, et cetera, um, are, continue to be the council's priorities. Uh, but within each of those priorities, um, we've, we've broken it down now between strategies and actions. And I recognize that some of that, you know, a little squishy between those two and it, two uh, um, you know, areas. Uh, but for the most part, trying to distinguish between what is the strategy behind this goal? And then what is the specific action that we're going to take in this fiscal year? That hopefully is measurable. Some of these things are hard to measure because it might be study or explore, right? Uh, especially for a first um, step in in that goal. Um, but I think this was to councillor uh, Pellerin's point, um, during goal setting about having more of a, a structure around strategies and and specific actions within our, our goals. So mayor, I was thinking, we can either go through them one at a time. Um, you know, I, I, it's kind of up to you. How do you want to um, do this tonight? Hopefully had a chance to review some of it. Again, some of these are carried forward. Um, and then, you know, whether we want a wordsmith, um, we want to review the actual, you know, actions. Is there things that we want to change? Is there different? You know, more, um, I don't know, direct action that needs to be taken rather than um, some of the, the language that we use in this, but happy to get any of your input on both process and how we handle this and also how we dive into it.
Yeah, I think just going one by one.
Okay. Yeah.
Make the most sense.
Um, per the council's kind of conversation and and some of the conversations we've had on one-on-one, I did reorder these. I don't know if you know that. Um, I put wildfire first this time, just to move, shake things up. Um, it kind of is front and center right now with what we've been talking about. So uh, you know, it's a little bit of a change, but wildfire mitigation and community resiliency. Uh, the first strategy, adopt local actions to increase community wildfire resiliency. The first one here, hopefully we will be through, but there is the code adoption and then of course, implementation, you know, comes after that. And so, you know, some of this is showing the community that we are going to continue to focus on this. Um, you know, we're going to have the defensible space code in front of you guys. Um, and then the next step, implementing with new developments and things like that, although um, I don't think there's a whole lot of those on the horizon that aren't already master planned or or have land use approval. Adopt and implement the building hardening standards. Um, this again, the timing on this uh, probably is happening in the summer, but um, you know, could be happening early in the fiscal year uh, of getting that adopted and then implementing uh, those standards uh, with the Suits County because they do our building permitting. Um, and then the third action is consider options for encouraging property owners to implement defensible space measures on developed property. Uh, this speaks to kind of what we had here with the joint meeting, uh, kind of those conversations about encouraging inspections and then other programs that we want to look at as a city to then further incentivize or encourage existing properties uh, to implement defensible space. You know, pursuing grants, establishing grant programs, public education campaigns, partnering with the fire district on uh, really focusing on properties within city limits. Um, so those are actions there. Captured? Good.
I had one comment on adopt and implement building hardening standards through the municipal code. Do we want to say building hardening and defensible space standards?
I mean, if the council is ready to implement or adopt defensible space for existing property, um.
No, I, I thought, yeah. Thought we were just doing a development code to catch the new properties and we were going to figure out what to do with existing ones later.
Yeah, I, but I think that needs to be done as soon as possible. Um, and it could be, I mean, that could I, I saw something today that kind of made me wonder, there could be some easier ways to do it. But.
Well, wait a minute. I was thinking, you know what? You're right. We were going the whole way with that one. I was thinking, um, building hardening. That's only for.
Well, we're going to be building hardening in the municipal code.
Right. But that's going to be, yeah.
We also need that development code.
It's, it is, it does, because it's, we adopt the.
Oh, because it's overarching, yes.
Yeah. I mean, the, the third bowl, considering options for encouraging property, I mean, encouraging property owners could be through adopting space. You know, if you, if we're ready to to move in that direction, I think it'll be one of those, those things you have to think about how we implement and enforce and get compliance, similar to dark skies.
Right.
Right?
Right.
It's going to take some time and education and.
Right, I feel like it will be like that. I think it's important to, personally, I think it's important to get the the standards in in place in the code and then but exactly like dark skies, it's like, I don't think there's an expectation people are going to have to do it, you know, in
In the next five weeks after week.
Yeah, exactly. You know, um, but I, I think the sooner, the better that it's in there. So there's that clarity and that that consistency.
I think I would say, to me, consider options is waffly in terms of moving forward. And I, I, I don't know how else to say it. I, I hear what you're both saying. And uh, I, I'm thinking that we need to somehow figure out how we adopt or, because I mean, I, I just, I I guess I don't have an answer to it, but it sounds like we're going to talk a lot about it this year. We're not going to do anything about it till the next fiscal year. And maybe that's not what it says to others in the room, but that's what it says to me. And I don't have an answer, unfortunately.
So the first one, the first one implements the reg, the defensible space regulation, the development code, and the third one is basically encouraging people to follow that? Is that what we're?
It's, I mean, I, I, I think it's what I said, incentives, uh, public information, campaigns, education. It's, I mean, I think it's incentives, public information, campaigns, education. But you can modify that one, you know, strike the consider and just say encourage property owners to implement defensible space.
Or, 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 take the word encourage out and put in.
Consider options for helping.
Create options.
Create options, but instead of encouraging, maybe that's the word that's bothering me is that, is we want, we want really to enable those individuals to do so. Some aren't going to want to do it. We understand that. But, but, so if we change that word to enable or help or whatever, enable is probably better.
Are we creating a program? I mean, is that what we're kind of doing? We're creating a method or a, you know?
Depends on how much we want to do.
How much, how much bandwidth we have within the organization and the council to do something.
I mean, it doesn't mean it's going to be fully implemented in the next fiscal year, but we can at least move, get it down the road, right?
I, I mean, if the council is serious about moving forward with adopting the defensible space measures for the municipal code.
Yes.
I would probably think about doing that first before you start a program because the program will help you get compliance with that. Does that make sense? Like.
Yeah.
It will on new development or on redevelopment on a property above a certain point. Is that correct? In other words, the code, we put it in the development code, that applies to whatever starts coming in the door to be built. And then there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have language in there that, that when changes to a property exceed a certain amount of square footage or whatever, or percentage, that then the current development code kicks in. Is that correct? Yes, that's what I mean.
And that's covered by bullet one with the development code as well.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So the real question then becomes someone like myself or my neighbor, if I can convince him to do something about his forest. You know, the torch next to my house that's going to aim right at it when the fire comes. You know, what options do we have to kind of entice him to think, well, yeah, I could take some of that brush out. Gary's not peering at me with his binoculars every day, so.
I think the backbone, the backbone of all that is code.
Yeah, I think it is.
That we have that, well, it's right there, written right there, you know. But obviously, we fully understand that that's, code is not going to fix all our problems. But, but it's the backbone of it, in my opinion, and we can work off of it. And, and then I think it's also weird not to have the muni code match the development code for an extended period of time.
Yeah, I mean, to the point, I mean, it'd probably be complaint driven, right? They have combustibles, they have, you know, their wood piles stacked next to their house or whatever. And oh, here we have, you know, we have code that prohibits that.
And we do, you know, we do have a lot of code already in there that has to do with vegetation and.
Noxious weeds.
Noxious weeds and maintenance of property and, and, and stuff like that. So it might not, famous last words, it might not be that heavy of a lift, you know, because we're not, we're not starting from scratch. We're just, we're just going to be probably building off of those in essence.
How big of a heavy lift is it for you guys? I mean, I guess.
That's really the question.
Yeah.
Good question, right?
Yeah, you're building a work plan.
We've got a lot going on and there's a lot being asked. Are we stepping on ourselves with what we want to do by creating work that slows the whole process down significantly?
I mean, it might be one of those things, once you open it up, then you, you realize it's a little bit.
Then there's more worms than you were expecting.
Yeah, I mean.
Good for fishing.
You know, it's also how far you want to go with, you know, if we require new development to follow like IBHS, right? And now we have a, you know, prohibited plant list and things like that. How are we going to bring properties into compliance that people love their trees and they may be planted close together, they may be close to homes? Like, you know, obviously you're going to have a timeline for bringing properties into compliance, but significant changes and.
What, what does everybody think about public perception and that we're jamming this all in the same year? Maybe the development code change could be used as almost like a test case-ish kind of thing?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we use that to educate. So maybe this isn't encouraging, but educating.
Built to this standard.
Based on it.
Yeah. Good idea.
I'm just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I totally get what you're saying. I, I just feel like it's. I guess I'm nervous. It's again, we're back to that position where part of the town is in.
Yeah.
Hi, and part of it's in moderate, you know, and it's like, well, we all understand that, you know, it's all going to burn the same way. And especially the existing homes are going to be.
Well, that might be where, again, the bag of worms could be, you know, we're adopting the prohibited plant list for existing properties. So you're not creating future problems with existing property and stuff that aren't making the two hundred foot, two hundred square foot change or, you know, but we also don't want existing properties to do things that are not, you know, best practice for defensible space, if that makes sense, right? So what I'm getting at is it may not be you're just adopting, you know, the same code into your municipal code, but it might be parts and pieces. And this is an example how it might be a little bit more complicated than just, oh, we already developed the code for development code. Let's just put that.
Roll it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel like the newer standards are strict, which we want them to be. But trying to get there in one, in just one jump might be really difficult. You know, they, like Jordan was saying, like, if we're going to then start requiring people to take out all their plants within five feet of their house. I think there's.
We'll run a road to her.
Well.
I, you've got a good point.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how well that would go over as a starting point. Yeah, I still feel it's the, I mean, the sooner the better in my book that people, you know, comply. However, I just still liken it to the dark skies where, you know, we, we understand there's some really big financial and structural lifts that people have to change, so.
That's a five-year plan.
Yeah, and you know, also the code is full of, every person in this room is in violation of something in our code that we don't even know about, you know. And nobody's, you know, the police haven't shown up at our doors yet. So, I mean, I'm always, I'm always kind of more for having stricter codes, knowing that, you know, they're never going to be held to that standard, you know, we aren't an HOA. But, I mean, yeah, there's, I mean, I just kind of wanted at least, I would be happy if it's acknowledged in some respects. Maybe adopt and implement building hardening standards. And, you know, explore defensible space standards from municipal code or, you know, at least acknowledge that it's coming and it needs to happen.
Based on what I've heard in the discussion, I guess I'm okay with the way it's written for right now. So we don't.
I think it's.
Spend an hour and a half trying to wordsmith this and with something that we're kind of looking at, maybe we have to put some other pieces in place first before we're really going to be able to.
Well, it's all, it's all about levels, right? I think we all are looking at this going, yeah, they're coming, just maybe not in this, you know, stricter rules are not going to, at least for existing owners, aren't coming right now, but they're coming. And so I think it's pretty good. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, considering options for encouraging property owners, you could include code in that. That is an option to encourage people. You know, I, I think it's, I just don't want it to get lost because it's a really critical, it's like a three-phase project. And it's a really, each one of these holds up the stool. And it's not really going to work well if one of the legs is missing, so.
Well, it'd be on us because it's on our goal for this year. And we all have the expectation of looking at it harder during the next year and probably putting it into municipal code within the next year or two, as long as there's not some big uproar, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and as long as I think if, there could be at least a little bit of staff time even just looking over the existing code around vegetation and fences and things like that. And just maybe even just having a report back on like, all right, it's going to take this much work or this much work. And then we can kind of go from there. I think that would be really helpful.
Okay, yeah. Trying to.
I promise I don't have comments about most of these things.
No, I think, I mean, when we get to some sections, I'll probably go quick, but the first couple are probably the mediest. So I think at least one word would be create options to encourage property owners instead of the consider options. So if you guys want to go that way, just a little more bold.
Yeah.
Okay, strategy, support local, county, state and federal government efforts regarding wildfire mitigation and natural disaster preparedness. So this is actually, I think, a carryover goal that felt like was more of a strategy. And then with some actions, we're doing the wildfire mitigation group meetings. We'll continue to convene those. But what we want to work together on is, under that first bullet, is improving our public awareness and distributing information. So things like the preparedness fairs. And then the council talked about, you know, really increasing the amount of information and working with DC SO on emergency evacuation planning routes. I want to make sure we got that language in there.
I just want to make sure we're not removing something as a result of saying with a focus on that maybe we just have to say including.
Including.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was going to be my other comment was, I know that we're, I think they're still in the works of trying to do a, you know, an emergency exercise multi-agency, and I would like that to be, you know, annual. And not just, I know that will occur during this fiscal year, not next fiscal year. But so again, that can be kind of implied in there, you know. I don't know if it needs to be called out separately, but as long as I think that there's an understanding that, I think it'd be advantageous to work on, you know, evacuation planning and things like that on an annual basis. It doesn't need to be specifically called out. It just, I wanted to make sure that that was, I mean, that's something that's important to me, but.
Okay. Second bullet, this is something that's going to kick off this spring is the community wildfire protection plan. And there was discussion about taking that, that update and where it intersects with the city has control over being able to implement those recommendations. The community wildfire protection plan is for this whole sisters country, it's just greater sisters area. So there's definitely parts that are, you know, more about the federal lands and private property. And then there's pieces I think that will come out of what we can do as a public agency, which I think we've done in the past with some of our properties. And then there's just sort of the leadership that you guys could have too and working with our partners on encouraging, you know, prescribed burning and, you know, other mitigation work. And maybe we can help, maybe we can encourage, maybe we can partner with.
Who initiates the, the plan update?
Project wildfire through the county, just Suits County.
Okay, so that's why we just participate.
Yeah.
Okay, county forester.
Yeah, they're forming that, those committees now, and I'm sure we'll have a couple of seats on that committee.
I think they, April, it's the same day as the.
Same week, yeah.
ELI.
Yeah.
Starting.
CLI is on the sixteenth, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to start about that week.
Okay.
Underground utilities is still in here. It's a goal.
Sky, but why not?
Well, didn't Peter Hoover say that CEC is going to put it underground, right, for the Larch project?
Requirement?
Yeah, that's basically a requirement now, right?
Is it?
Paul's ready. How many feet are they getting rid of over there for the Adams Commons or a couple of poles and? You know, yet?
I would say at least five, six hundred.
That's nice. I mean, I like, I, this is a goal that I've been talking about since I've been on council and I like it. It's not like one of those goals that you're even identifying particular areas. It's just one of those goals that's on there to keep reminding us that we want, that's a long-term, twenty-year, thirty-year goal. Eventually it'll all be gone and then we'll all be like, yay! And then it won't be on there anymore. It's one of my favorite goals. I really like it.
I mean, no, it's very important. I don't know exactly what we do to facilitate and support it. I mean, besides.
I think we do what we're doing.
We, we.
When development re-occurs on some kind of a basis, well, like the Adams Street redevelopment, when that occurs, that will, that will be another piece of it. And.
Was that more on your end of saying, hey, by the way, you guys should really do this? Or was it really more just codified that they had to do it anyway?
CEC wants to get their stuff underground and they can have it developed. But again, our code requires.
Okay.
It's one of those new developments that happens, it's the existing infrastructure.
Right.
Except for when there's redevelopment and then transmission stuff is really hard to get underground. It's just really expensive.
And there might be other opportunities when we're digging in our own ground and it just happens to be along a line that CEC's got some poles.
And we happen to have a chainsaw.
And, and we can, I have a story about that. But yeah, we try, we try and encourage it then too, right? I mean, that's just, you know, when we can. I like it.
I do too.
Check, check, check.
Okay, lead by example through implementation of defensible space and wildfire mitigation actions on public property. We'll continue to implement our mitigation plan recommendations at the treatment plant. I think some of that's moving forward right now, City Hall. We have actually a grant that we just received. That's why you see some tags on some trees right now. And well, one, and then design and construct a wildfire mitigation and water conservation demonstration project at City Hall. Again, this is another action that is beginning, like the early stages of being underway with, we've had some conversations with the landscape firm. There was, I think council was interested in, in pursuing sort of the walk the talk strategy here and leading by example. And, yeah.
Yeah, walk the talk.
Did I say that?
You said it right.
Okay.
You said it right. I.
Not punch drunk yet.
Okay.
Not quite nine o'clock yet.
Yeah. Right.
All right, the next big one, housing livability and growth. There's usually a lot of goals within this one, so deep breath here. First one, strategy, ensure the city has an adequate supply of land to accommodate future responsible growth that maintains community livability. And so this is sort of something drafted up to kind of capture the actions under this. You know, this is sort of trying to recognize that we're trying to be responsible with our growth and work with the public on it and maintain our community character. So obviously, the, the big one will be the UGB amendment, which should be, you know, processing through the adoption process in the fall. Begin area-specific planning for the UGB expansion areas. We've talked about this. You know, maybe one or two out here, but the next kind of planning efforts that come after the UGB expansion will be the more specific area planning. And then the, the other implementation of the UGB would be the annexation regulations.
Thank you.
Updating that. So those actions are captured under that strategy.
That's going to be a, that's going to be a fun little thing for us, annexation, yeah, be good conversations about. You know, what are our long-term policy goals? I mean, that's where we really need to hit, we need to hit it right, you know what I mean? So that's us. I like it. I mean, they have to help, obviously.
And those are, those are pretty big efforts. I mean, we're going to finish the UGB, you know, hopefully. And then immediately have to go into this. And if you remember how, you know, SDRs and dark skies and code updates like that, I mean, I think annexation is going to be a similar effort, if not more, to kind of work through that. Pursue resources and partnerships for the development of affordable and workforce housing. Carryover goal here is monitoring, reevaluating, consider implementation of additional strategies of the housing plan and the efficiency measures. We did some of that with a workshop and kind of gave an update on if we've seen any of those put in play. And the councils kind of gave some feedback on additional efficiency measures to look at. I think this would then kind of feed into the next action. If we want to consider forming an affordable housing advisory body, whether that's formal, informal. I kind of left that action sort of open-ended to kind of bring you guys some options. If that group looks like a task force, is it a, you know, a round table that we bring together? You know, similar to what we do with the wildfire mitigation and the houselessness groups. That then they can consider things like our efficiency measures and other things that cities are doing to encourage additional housing. I want, may want to wordsmith, but that was my shot at trying to capture that conversation. And then the third bullet, study and consider additional funding sources for affordable housing, including local sources as well as leveraging state programs. Some of those state programs, you know, there's additional legislation, but there's the, the middle housing loan program that we can look into. And we were still working on getting that workshop this spring, I think in May, on looking at things that I think have been looked at before, but we want to bring back like a CET or vacancy fees and things like that as additional sources to our TLT for affordable and workforce housing grant programs.
I'll be, buddy. It'd be interesting to see what comes out of the legislature, though. We have, we're kind of shooting in the dark because we have no idea what may or may not be available.
But that's what we start with studying.
Yeah.
I'm going to need to leave for a few seconds, but I looked at the next section and I have no comments or changes to that, so. I'm gonna need to leave for a few seconds, but I looked at the next section and I have no comments or changes to that, so.
Okay, we'll change everything while you're gone.
Good with that? Good with that section? Okay. Leveraging local and regional resources and partnerships to help the sisters houseless community, this is a carryover. Kind of moved into a strategy, underneath that we have continued convening the community partnership. That name will probably change, we're still working on that. That's why it's not capitalized, on houselessness with a focus on additional public engagement opportunities, so. As you know, we're working on that action plan with the intention to going back out to the public and getting their feedback on it. That probably will happen sometime in the summer-ish, I'm guessing, so. And then participating in the completion of the community action plan, so again, committing staff time, convening these meetings and being a part of it and also. City councillors, and considering implementation of city responsible actions. Soft commitment from you guys until you can actually see that action plan and what's in it. Councilor McDougall is a part of that, but some of those things that, that have come forward are asking about tiny home developments or. I think the first one we may want to put in front of council to consider would be safe parking regulations as the, as the first one. But those are some examples that they've been talking about.
Let's not, let's not forget to at least consider mobile home. Areas as well, I know you've brought that up there before and I think that that's a, and actually a really good idea.
I love it.
I know there's a lot of people that they, oh, those are terrible, I'm sorry, they're affordable, so let's, let's at least discuss it.
They're pretty fancy. Modernizing the designs of those and looking really nice.
Okay, next one, continue to update the sisters development code to bring it into conformance with the sisters comprehensive plan, so this is a. Another carryover goal moved into strategies, one of, I think that one addition was implementing council policies. To kind of start capturing a little bit more of some of the things that have come up through conversations about like efficiency, efficiency measures. You know, parking requirements, setbacks and things like that have been talked about. Just a couple bullets here that came up through the, the goal setting, develop a process to monitor the effectiveness of code amendments, we've kind of started that. When we did the workshop and kind of giving this feedback loop of, once we implement the code. Or adopt the code, are developers using it, how is it working out? Study additional minor modifications to the city's short-term rental regulations. This was a conversation about a couple things in particular that came out of the effort last year, the condominiums and also owner occupied. I, I said minor, hoping that that would be a more streamlined and quick process instead of another wholesale study. And then begin process to update design standards in the community development code. This was brought up by a couple councillors about variation in home design and also in our multifamily development. Scott might be like, oh, I'm going to balance all these code amendments with UGB and annexation, but. That's why it says begin process, recognizing it may be more towards the later part of the fiscal year.
If we had to get rid of one goal out of this whole thing, I'd be okay without. Doing anything about SDRs for a year, just taking a year off, seeing how it goes, seems like we've done it. I, two out of the last three or four years, it just. I just think we're monkeying around with it a lot, but we may not have to. I get the concerns. But it just seems, it does take a lot of time and it creates a lot of. Conversation. That's my only thought. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying if we had to cut something, that would be something I could go, yeah, we're too busy, let's let it slide for one year and I. I don't think it would hurt a whole bunch, other than maybe the condominium people, I understand, I, I totally get that conversation for sure. Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
You want to add that word rental in there just to clarify, short-term?
Short-term regulations.
Okay, I'm moving on to dark skies. I, I started the word with celebrate, you know, I think it's a pretty big deal, first organ, well, second, but biggest organ community to have the dark side certification. Being a model for, for other communities. And we know we've been working with Explore Sisters and we continue to work with the committee, I think there's opportunities this year, especially if there's success and grants for. Explore Sisters and others to do some events and maybe do some, you know, improvements at our parks and things like that, but. We also are on the clock, we have four years in terms of compliance, and so we just need to start really working on the community education. Thinking about things like incentives, you know, making it easier for, for homeowners, property owners to, to convert their lighting.
So Jordan, the public lighting investments, and I don't want to start a big conversation here, do we have a general idea of how much? All of the city investments would cost to make it compliant? I don't need a number now, I just.
Cascade alone is, was like hundred, two hundred. I mean, we're looking for other ways, but yeah, I mean it.
So, my, my question is, when you say public lighting investments, are we referring to our properties that we own, are we referring to the public? Homes, that, I mean, that.
Oh, yeah.
See, what I, I mean, I read that as assisting homeowners in becoming compliant. Not changing the lights on Cascade, which I, I know is a part of it too, so do we need to?
City-owned instead of public?
If you want, I, I have masking, that's what I'm masking, is it city-owned lighting or is it, is it the community?
I think the intention here was city-owned, again, kind of leading by example, we have more than just Cascade, but there's other public entities in. Sisters that may need some lights that need to be.
Maybe public entities. Just add the word entities and then they're covered.
Public, publicly owned.
Publicly owned or something like that, I mean, I, I did read it initially, when I read it at home, I read it as we were, the assistance programs for homeowners. You've said, I just want to be sure that we don't.
It's my favorite goal on there, I mean, I like putting the word celebrate in a goal.
I do too.
I think that's frickin' awesome, so I don't know who did that. You, okay.
We should celebrate you're doing that.
Celebrate Jordan, celebrating this.
It's gonna get worse, we've got another hour to go, so.
The second half will go faster. Okay, enhance recreational opportunities and park amenities, so this was a carryover. The actions now identified in here, the kind of the next step within Northwest Master, Northwest Park Master Plan. Probably to be renamed at some point, will be to adopt the master plan. As part of that master plan will be a funding and phasing plan, likely needing to phase depending on the funding plan. And then continue to seek opportunities to implement priority projects. Hard to measure that one, recognize that as an action, you know, we kind of use that goal and, and our commitment in partnering with SBRD. There's probably other opportunities here with the. Mobility, transportation hub with other amenities like a dog park that we've been working with the Parks Board on, so that, that goal kind of captures those type of. Priorities. Yeah, thoughts on that, question's good.
I think that. Speaking to. The soon-to-re-named transportation location. Mobility is definitely not on the word that's being used, because everybody on the committee said, hey, we just, that says, we're talking about folks that need assistance in getting around. So we need to drop that word real fast. But I think that it's. I think when you think of that as a park. With a transportation hub or whatever you want to call it, as a part of it, but the rest of the grounds, the, the forest areas. The trails, the labyrinth, the, the potential art walk that's going in through there, that's been discussed. And other opportunities that may present themselves as the property is developed out. I think if it is a park. With a city amenity in the park that's related to transportation, and so. I don't know how that fits into what you've worded here, but I think we need to be aware of the fact that. I think the CPAB is, is starting to look at it as, as a bigger entity in the park process. Then, then it, because as we know, at least initially, there won't be an awful lot of transportation hub type activity there. We will build it, they will come, but that will take time, and I, and I think that. I want the public to view it as a park rather than, why are we building a mobility hub on the end of town? We don't need a hub on the end of town.
I'm actually amazed at how many trees are left and how woodsy it still looks. I think they've done, you guys have done a great job.
And I, so I think that, I want to start, I really want to start the city thinking of it as a park and a park amenity. And as, to me, that's every bit as important, and I'm speaking from my park side now, every bit as important as our transportation aspect. Which is really what we're doing it for, but there would be a lot more there than when we're done, and that will be, make it a part of the community, not sort of an ancillary.
Yeah, and I think the only thing that we just caution on is. Remember the funding is coming from, you know, and, and why, it has to be somewhere in the title and clear that, that's the.
And as soon as it's built, we can park the, anything that's not concrete.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, yeah, the, the other parts of the property and stuff definitely could be used for.
But I think we had the discussion, is that a condition of the funding and it's not, and I think that we, we, we stay true to it and we figure out how we, we, we word that. So we're not mistaking about what it is, and that's going to be a combination of signage and it could be the motility, you know. The transportation hub at. Blank park, you know, so it's, I don't think that's an issue, I think it's just in how we handle it internally and how we, we. But the community is going to call it. Park by its park name, they're not going to call it the transportation hub on the end.
Carrie, are you wanting to see a bullet point under this strategy?
No, I just wanted to be sure that we capture the fact that, that, that when we talk about this year's goals, that I think. We as a community. I want us to celebrate that as a community amenity. Not just as a transportation amenity, which some citizens will view it as. They'll come to realize that it's a very important thing, it's a transportation amenity, but I think initially. Selling it as, as an important park amenity will be every bit as important to our community as to why we're spending the dollars and why we're doing it.
And it's in the, is it a priority project in the twenty-three master plan?
No, it's called a. I don't think it's called, I don't think we identified it as a park in the twenty-three master plan, because it was always talked about as being the mobility location.
Transportation plan.
Yes, thank you.
But a thing like a dog park or trails, amenities that can be incorporated in that.
Even if it's not in the park master plan.
Because there's a lot of stuff in there sprinkled, like economic development coming up, strategy, as public art opportunities.
Just, just so you're aware that, that, that's. Kind of, I think where the CPAB is and that's where I encourage to push them, quite frankly, because they were stumbling over how, what, why are we even do, doing this? Because it's not a park, it's a transportation hub. We've rewritten the script, city manager, no park.
I'm behind you.
Park for parking buses.
Yes, this was a park.
Okay, are we ready for economic development? Uh, carry, carry over, continue to work with economic development for Central Oregon, Edco. The bullet here, workforce housing is, is one of the priorities, childcare options continue to be important. And then I added public transportation improvements. We talked about more CET service and things like that, we lost, you know, some of the van pool opportunities this year, so. You know, I, I know it's a focus for Eric on working with businesses and getting their support to kind of push that forward.
Got to give him something to do.
Uh, and then new strategy, encourage responsible tourism development and support main street business. Kind of a new strategy under this to capture a couple of these actions. Instead of just saying, I, I think previously it was more about Explore Sisters, but move that to. An action to continue supporting collaboration with Explore Sisters and investing in public art, art opportunities and programs and update policies and codes. Were necessary to facilitate public art, this is, you know, you're going to have a workshop on public art, but we talked at goal setting, kind of what is the next logical step? That we can take as a city on these actions for a public art program, it's investment in public art, creating, you know, things like, you know, this, the. Putting in the concrete pads and things for art, and then I think we talked a little bit about murals and other code updates that we can explore.
I personally would love to make the art, that art piece right there, the invest in public art opportunities. Just absolutely as robust as you can, because I really think that it reflects our community and, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to wordsmith it. I don't even know if you have to change anything, but I just think it's, I think it's a, it's a really. Very short statement for a really big deal for town, and I think that. The bandwidth on that, I know it's starting small, because we're just trying to figure it all out, but I think it's going to go like this down the road and we're, I, I like the thought that. That we're the leaders in, of the art community, not just in our area, not even just regionally, but I think in the state, I think we could. We've had talk in the past about Sisters is in the middle of the state, it could be the shiny light of art throughout the whole state, and I think this is how it starts. It's this little thing, but I think it's going to go fast. And I don't, I know it's, I'm not just talking staff time, I'm talking community-wide, so I think that public art commission or, you know. Groups of people that are all in on the art and stuff will be working with us a lot better in the future, I hope, so anyway. Done with that, sorry.
Well, and I think update policies, where necessary to facilitate public art. Is, is in code is probably the critical component of it. If there are barriers, I think that at least their perception, there are some barriers, whether there are or not, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think the goal one side of it, you know, just, just the public outreach and having the right people in the same room, that's how the best ideas come about, right? And I think we're doing that more than we have in the past with the art community, and I think that we just need to continue to foster that.
Yeah, as long as art includes music.
Yeah, I mean, we got our guitar people and our banjo people and concerts and belfry, I mean, there's, we are chock full of it. And at the city level, we're still in our infancy about how to collaborate with it, I think, in a lot of ways.
Do we say art and performance, or do we assume that everybody knows that performance isn't art, which it is? Don't get me wrong, but do we clarify that by, I think you had a good point, Jennifer, music, I mean, performance.
You can't define art.
Good. Thank you. Including minds. He's on the.
Okay. If he has to.
Here he comes.
Hello? Edco, yeah, hey, I, I totally agree with the conversation, art and. Musical instrument, instruments, and I could use the city's help on that. Of attracting those kind of companies, I would love that, so, just a comment.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have to figure out what he means by that.
Well, I think that maybe anything that makes it more art-friendly then will attract.
He might have something specific and I'll, I'll talk to him about it at our next local.
It might be a crayon manufacturer.
Well, we do, I mean, we have Thompson.
We have some good stuff, and they still make guitars in Wood Class into high school too, so. That's Woods II.
Luther's class. Luthiers.
My kid took Woods I and loved it, and she's going to take Woods II.
After nine o'clock.
I was thinking another bullet item under here, related to tourism is to leverage our new dark sky certification. Word, wording it however, but. We work so hard for that, let's.
Pretty good right off the bat.
Something similar. Nine twenty, sorry.
Oh, the next, the next one under essential infrastructure is basically Paul's to-do list for the next year. But this is, you know, the, and it comes up, right, you know, you will have contracts, we'll have. You know, progress reports, we'll have probably rates, you know, to, to consider. Obviously, public outreach and communication with these projects, but, you know, these are the next steps on the major infrastructure in front of us. You'll see this during the budget process too. And then the next one, under the plan to pursue funding opportunities for high priority pedestrian, bicycle and key transportation improvement infrastructure. And then the next one, uh, under the plan to pursue funding opportunities for high priority pedestrian, bicycle and key transportation improvement infrastructure projects and improved pedestrian and vehicle safety is kind of a mouthful. Um, there was, there was some conversation and discussion about additional goals in, in that area. Um, we have the pathway projects we need to continue and move forward with. Um, as the Elm Street was a little delayed with the, the kind of the state process and, and, um, grants that we were seeking, but, uh, then we have, you know, we need to think about the next part of Barclay, so developing that funding plan, can we achieve it with street STCs, when, uh, is that in the next year or two? Um, and then, uh, we've talked a lot about the rapid flashing beacons, um, and additional locations for those and how we can maybe help make that happen.
On, on that one, um, I don't wanna limit us in case for some reason we can't do flashing beacons, so could we say, working with ODOTs for, working with ODOT for additional rapid flashing or other proven means to improve safety? So we don't have nothing.
At least painted, aren't they?
If we can't do beacons.
Or other safety crossing infrastructure.
Yeah.
Just kind of make it a little more chunky.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Not, not flags.
And I, I just wanna not skip over what was just previous, and it's just a quick comment that, uh, when you look at that list of priorities that, that's on Paul's list in the wastewater capital improvement plans, if there wasn't a, a strong message about how important it is, we got it today in our meeting with the fire district with larger transmission lines, more water reservoirs, those are all things that, that are important to the safety of the city and, and, uh, you know, it may not have been the reason you were doing it, but it, it sure hit home almost as if they read this plan and, and knew that it was on there, so. Uh, compliments to the Public Works Advisory Board and, and your work on thinking that far ahead, because that is a key component, what I was hearing for our wild and fire preparedness and keeping our, our city insurance rates as, as affordable as possible, that's what I wanna say.
Yeah. So, um, we need to update our city's transportation system development charges, we talked a little bit about that, and we've, we've done the water sewer and parks. Um, and we got, uh, some readjustment we need to do with our transportation system char, uh, development charges now that, you know, I think it's been a couple of years since we updated the, the TSP. Uh, and then the last bullet here, working with the Public Works Advisory Board. Um, I think this was, Paul made a comment about, you know, looking at them to kind of give some advice on how we can get additional public involvement, either through or maybe another committee, uh, working group, task force, formal or informal, um, to, for pedestrian and, and bike infrastructure, and I think the mayor, uh, Mary Let's brought up, um, the idea of having like a bike and pad, uh, advisory committee.
Is the word structures appropriate there?
No. I, yeah, I didn't know what that was.
Public involvement.
Public involvement structures.
Like we all got in.
Committee. We're gonna put a, or a bike rack in the middle of, uh, Washington Street or something like that. Um, I, I understand that it's referring to different mechanisms for doing so.
There you go, mechanisms.
Yeah, okay.
But structures didn't.
Or procedures.
Like a cheerleader pyramid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought maybe Mike was. Can't blame that one on Adobe.
Hit the bottom.
It's late, sorry.
Almost done.
Just, I don't care what the word is, but that, to me, that was confusing.
Yeah.
That's too late a swain.
Why we're doing this.
It was city manager speak.
Wyatt's draft. Okay, good governance, um, continuing our, our work on public involvement and um, a couple of the bullets here, we have a communications plan, thank you Rebecca, and thank you the civic leadership, uh, group for that. Um, we wanna continue to implement that and, and also monitor the success, so how's that going with implementing some of those strategies and, and tracking that? Um, and then the next bullet is a new one, this was talked about at a goal setting with youth involvement, um, different structures for getting youth involved, uh, advise, youth advisory committees and things like that, but we really kind of kept it at, um, you know, identifying the partnerships and barriers and opportunities for, for getting, uh, younger community members, so that could be youth through thirty really underrepresented groups and feeling they can engage with, uh, the city government.
I think the only thing I'd change would say support younger community members. Not young, because that's, young's kind of specific, but.
Younger.
Interpretation, I think younger would help. If you can spare an E and R.
It's in there, got it. Um, er, under. And this next strategy is a continuation or a carryover goal, uh, move to a strategy, uh, and we spoke about one of these bullet points tonight, having annual joint meetings with district boards, so hopefully found value in, in that one tonight, and we'll, we have more to come. Um, so I already had that put down as a goal. Um, continue partnerships with C four C on local civic leadership development programs, and this is actually about, um, what do we do after the Civic Leadership Academy, you know, and looking at different models, maybe different ways to continue that kind of, um, program. And then our commitment to, to being involved with the Sisters Country Vision.
The first bullet, collaborate with community organizations, does that include our Central Oregon committees that were all on COIC, CoAct, COCO? If not, could we add a fourth bullet that says participate in and contribute to regional committees and boards representing the city of Sisters? I think we should get credit for our, I mean, we, we really do contribute quite a bit on these boards, and I think that's a good thing, and I think we should keep it as a goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, thanks.
That would still.
You're right, I know some cities that don't seem to do that, and.
Yeah, there's some, yeah.
Um, but so, yeah, it's nice to put that in writing, it's a, it's a good reminder of why we do it.
We have a COCO membership of nine and six, six cities show up every time.
Yeah.
Hmm. Um, and then finally, uh, this last strategy, um, is kind of a new of language there, but, uh, we wanted to capture the, the desire to update the city council rules. Um, and then the next one is, and kind of a catch for other opportunities that come up during the year, um, that could be housekeeping updates and other, um, council priorities that may not be listed here. Um, you know, explicitly listed, um, and your choice of whether to keep something in there or not. Um, you know, there's, most of, most of those are already captured in other parts of the goals, but there's occasional, um, you know, this past year, I think we, the council adopted a policy around, um, proclamations, there was another policy, we get the other one that.
Naming.
Naming policy, so things have popped up that, you know, are just good governance sort of things that, you know, we made, became, might come to us because of public comment or something that, you know, just arose out of the normal business, like, oh, we should have a policy on that.
Works for me.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And then finally, environmental sustainability, um, the city has our first environmental sustain, sustainability plan. Um, so we'll be looking for opportunities to continue to implement that, uh, we got the EV charging stations at these.
Transportation.
We need to take that word to these portal.
Please, it, it, it actually did, that was a visceral refer, never mind. We might be able to use.
Yeah, I, I see it, I see it, um. Uh, we talked, the council had the, the conversation about, we need a policy around public electric vehicle chargers, really about how do we charge for those, how do we manage that and administer that? Um, and then, uh, we just had that workshop with Republic, we're still working on the future use of the Sisters who cycling center, so I wanna make sure we had a goal about that. Um, and then, uh, the, the water recirculation, um, retrofit, I think there might be another word for that, but, um, at the First Street Park splash pad, so, I mean, you know, reusing that water rather than just let it flow.
Um, that's gonna get done, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's a goal, and I think that's a goal that we need to make sure we hit. Well, I'm not saying we weren't going to, if it's not written down on this piece of paper, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm for it.
It's, it's, it's something underneath, I don't know where it would go, if it goes anywhere, we just kind of keep in the back of our minds, but when we look at those EV charging stations, the weather we're gonna charge, around what we're gonna charge, I want us to look at how we recapture gas tax, I think it's, is the sticking point with members of the community that they go to one of the gas stations in town and they pay gas tax and someone charges their car and doesn't. And, uh, so I think that there are ways to do it, it's, it, I can help with that, it's not that hard, and.
Probably some, just, it's a math formula.
Did you just do it by kilowatt hour, and, and then you come out, so you get about the same amount of money as you would for a gallon of gas?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's easy to do.
Yep, I think that.
It doesn't have to be rocket science.
Yeah, and the state house might be doing something.
Figure out what the math is, you agree on it.
Yep.
For ODOT funding.
It's not that hard.
Coming from the state as well.
Yeah, it, it, until ODOT does something to, to capture it a different way.
Hey.
Great, we got through it.
Looks good.
Good job.
Hey.
Are we done?
Oh, wait, there's more. Wait, there's another page.
Oh, yes, the whole bad side.
So we'll bring that back, um, for adoption with, uh, changes here tonight, yeah. Off we go.
About when?
Uh, next, next meeting.
Oh, next meeting.
Which, by the way, your next meeting is.
In April.
In April.
I, I have a question for the gentleman in the audience, could you identify yourself, please? I had a suspicion that's who you were, and I want to apologize for making the day you might join the budget committee when, at appointment, go on as long as it has, listen to all this stuff, but actually was a, probably a pretty good introduction.
Yeah.
So, I, I just wanted to recognize that you were here in states or it's, uh.
On other business, right?
Yeah, it was.
What's on other business? Please tell us, mayor.
Talk bullet numbers tonight, um, we have a, a new budget committee appointment.
Who might that be?
Um, his name is Tom Dorst. And, um, he is going to be appointed to a term which will expire in, uh, November thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I mean, sorry, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, replacing, um, a member who had to leave, um, because of a conflict. A good conflict, not a bad conflict. Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, welcome. For stepping.
You're appointed.
Thank you for stepping up and sitting here to hear your name be appointed, some people don't do that, so thank you.
Thanks for being engaged.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, and think of the, all the numbers he got to see tonight, that was fantastic. Um, we also have a second, um, appointment to announce to the Parks Board. Um, I'm gonna point, uh, Brian Metolius to an open vacancy, um, on the Parks Board, and that term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Congratulations, Brian, wherever you are.
Welcome, Brian, um, CLI graduate, right? No, no, but a friend of, he got sucked in through that process, that's right, so good. Good to see, um, okay, and on to Mr. Wheeler, was any responses to prior meeting public comments?
Uh, there was two public comments, uh, there was a request for support for the Sisters Trail Alliance, um, and we drafted a letter and the council approved, um, sending a letter of support for, for their, uh, seeking funding for that project, uh, at the Sisters School District campus, um, and then, uh, Mr. Owens had concerns about, uh, the Sisters, uh, senior living, uh, situation there. Um, I think there was another article in the paper today about it. Um, I do have a meeting with the executive director tomorrow, I don't have a lot to report on that, I know, um, the mayor, uh, had reached out to, I think, um, Representative, um, Levy and, uh, Brodmann, but, um, and got a list of other assisted living facilities in Central Oregon as a kind of a resource for residents, um, to look into if they need to.
Especially whether they carry, they use Medicaid.
Medicaid, yeah. Um, so, you know, hopefully I can get some more details about kind of the transition situation going on there, um, in my meeting.
Okay. Any staff comments?
I'm happy to keep it short, I can send these to you guys by email, just a couple of things to point out, though, um, again, no meeting, uh, no second meeting, we're going on spring break, uh, a couple of you are traveling, safe travels, enjoy, um, spring break. Uh, I do wanna plug, though, that the Roundabout Art will be on display. So the finalists that was selected through a pretty robust process of vetting qualifications, uh, committee with artists and professionals on it, um, selected two finalists that have created, you know, mock art, um, sculptures, uh, for a Roundabout Art. Um, will be on display March fifteenth through the thirty-first at the library, so that's Saturday, Saturday, Sunday? Yeah, um, so it will be here.
Hope you're traveling, sorry you couldn't see it.
Well, if you, you'll be back, uh, the thirty-first, uh, but then you have another opportunity, it'll be at the Sisters High School, so we can capture parents and students and teachers, um, April second through the fourth. Um, and then I do, I, I did wanna bring up, I had forwarded you, uh, s, uh, a, a letter, and I'm, I'm gonna come back to that, but, uh, the city's building on, on Main Avenue, um, uh, we got word from Sisters Makers that they're giving their ninety-day notice, um, to not renew their lease or terminate their lease, actually. Um, that would be effective on May twenty-sixth, so, uh, you know, the director of that, um, group has unfortunately moved, um, and the, the makers board has decided not to continue that lease, that has, so there, there will be a vacancy in that building. Um, C four C, so has submitted a letter of interest, um, uh, to the, to the city. Um, and, you know, they, they're a community-based organization, uh, in their letter of interest, they've expressed interest in, um, continuing some of the things that are already going on in there and even make it even more public. Um, so, you know, from a staff level, it seems like a pretty good fit to what we were looking for in the initial RFP that we did last year. Um, and so, as part of this process, we, um, I think we've been talking with council about, uh, maybe bringing them in for a presentation, um, kind of, uh, and do a more robust proposal, similar to what we had in the first round, so having them submit a little bit more details about what they're, they're planning, what they're proposing, and then having a presentation to council, if you count, if the council agrees to invite them to do that.
Is that a workshop item, or is that a?
It could either be a workshop or a presentation.
I.
And, yeah.
I think that my preference would be a presentation, but, I mean, it could be workshop, we could have more dialogue back and forth, but I, I, um, I'm, I don't have a lot of interest in opening this up for a long, drawn-out proposal if we think we have of, of everybody in the community, let me rephrase that, of all the other applicants that we had before and everything. If, if there's a sense of feeling on the part of this group that this, and, and of staff that this might be an appropriate designee to step into the lease. Um, and so I, I would like to have that done either as a workshop with public participation or it's part of the, of this group's, um, meeting, I, I guess the reason I say maybe not a workshop is that sometimes we get into the weeds and the workshop runs over, so maybe it's more appropriate to throw it in the meeting where we wanna go home and we don't weed it so bad. But that's up to, that's up to the, the mayor and the council president to decide.
Feels to me like a, a presentation is, um, meant for a shorter conversation, and, um, most of the details are gonna come out in the RFP or whatever document they do fill out, the letter itself was pretty explanatory. Um, and as someone who is previously part of the organization, I can confirm their financial stability and, um, stability for the next few years, um, which I feel is a, um, kind of a key point there. Um, uh, in our, our conversation the other day, we did wanna have it presented in public, so if there was some kind of, um, somebody who in the public that wanted to make commentary on it or had a, um, bad reaction to that decision, we would at least be able to hear that. And it's also, this is not happening behind closed doors.
If it's in a workshop, people can comment in the, um, city council meeting, uh, right after, that's one good thing about it.
Um, some of, some of the meetings, I, we've had presentations and then visitor comments, if it's, I've seen.
Sort of like a hearing, though.
No, um, no, visitor comments scheduled in the agenda after the presentation, does that make sense? It's, but it has nothing to do with the presentation. Like.
Right, well, we can, we can work with the mayor and council president, what, what it looks like, but if the council's okay, we'll, we'll invite them to come, and if you're okay with them submitting a, a proposal too, and.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think we're at a point in the night we're trying to figure out exactly how to do it, Mike can.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, as long as.
Yeah.
I mean, it's literally past my bedtime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm almost done, I'll submit, I promise everything else will come in writing, just a couple of things that are gonna happen in the next month that, since we're not meeting until, I think, the ninth. Um, the CLA, the next round, we, uh, we're reviewing those applications on Friday, um, I think Council Pollard is part of that, um, I think there was twenty-four applications, so, um.
Twenty-four to twelve.
And that's starting in April, uh, early April or mid, mid-April is, um, just kicking off that, and then, uh, Barclay Phase One is starting the seventh of April, I think. Yeah, so before we meet again, work's gonna be started on that project. Yeah, so before we meet again, work's going to start on that project. So I wanted to just clue you in on that, as well as the final two pedestrian crossings for McKinney Butte is happening during.
That happening in spring break too, right?
Yeah, so that's going to be happening when school's off during spring break.
Is that paint or the table ones? Or those?
Oh, both.
Okay, good.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, that's it, the rest I have to do, but in writing.
Looking forward to that email.
It's going to be a long one.
It's okay. I mean, it's already written down, right? You're copying and pasting a lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have mayor counselor business, is there anything anybody wants to share?
I have a couple of things just because of the long break. I've done a lot of things, there's no reason to recap at all, if you want to find out, I can email too if you want. But I do, I am going to go to COCO the Capitol Day, because you're not available, right? And then I'm going to the city small meeting on the day after the 21st and I'm going to Mitchell.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm excited about it.
It's a fun little town.
It is.
Yeah, I love it. So those are the two things and then that's kind of all I have.
Thank you.
Lot of, lot of Edco stuff, obviously, and we did do the master planning session in, that was in Redmond. And then I have the regional meeting tomorrow morning, so that's it.
Just a couple of quick things, we have the CPAB meeting, most of us can wait till the next time we meet. Just for everybody's information, SPRD is moving into the building on 14th, they're turning off the phones. That one center, they're moving the phones and they will have a ribbon cutting at 9:00 AM on the 17th. It's sort of not, it's not their grand opening, just sort of a soft opening with a grand opening on June the 7th. So if you want to put those dates in your calendars, you have them. April 25th is Arbor Day, but we'll have a meeting before then.
She said at the meeting the other day that the ribbon cutting is on the 31st.
Well, she may have changed her mind, which she's allowed.
I just talked to her yesterday.
Thirty-first, that's what she.
I don't remember what date she said.
I heard it was June too, but. Well, the big one is, the grand opening is June 7th, that's the big splash. They're going to have sort of a soft opening. She told me on the 17th after everything was up and running, but maybe she decided that they needed more time. So we can.
Contact Jen Holland.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, you contact Jen. And then the other, only other thing I really want to say real quickly, because we did have a coffee with the counselor. A couple of things came up in it, just for everybody's information, we heard about the lodge, obviously, defensible space. We had, Kathy had some ideas on things and what might do if there was going to be the, what was going to happen over the property over by high school. Some pretty good ideas, actually, you, you saw them, they were interesting. And, and then we had a, a comment from somebody saying they would like us to look at changing the code for safe parking or the outhouse and consider pods and other things like that. So that, those were the discussions we had, did I miss anything?
No, that was.
That's it.
It was another good meeting.
Real quick, COIC meeting for March. As I've been kind of looking at all of the services that COIC provides, I mentioned before about the Mobile Employment Resource Van or MERV, which has an employment counselor and they dispatch to local cities, they provide job search opportunities and interview preparation and resume development and career guidance. I requested Tammy to look into if Sisters could, if they have the capacity for Sisters, they say they do. So they will be bringing the van out on March 28th. Jennifer Holland was nice enough to say, hey, let's try the community center. And so if anybody wants to check that out, when I get the time, I'll let you know. I'm planning to attend to learn more about that and maybe we can kind of do it on a trial basis and see how it works for our community. We just got to get the word out.
Thank you.
So MERV is coming, yay.
It's a great name, I think. It's an acronym that works well, yes.
That's all.
Well, that segues into the vision implementation, I'm going to go, vision implementation team meeting Carrie and I attended because Tammy Bany was there and she did mention that as well. Eric Strobel was in there because he's, they're kind of working on trying to get people from, you know, some places that have closed down new jobs, so I think they're connecting on that as well. So hopefully there'll be some good attendance there. I will, I put, wrote very tiny notes here. Jordan and I met with a reporter from the Bulletin talking about wildfire mitigation issues. I haven't seen anything pop up yet, okay. Didn't look too closely today.
Hopefully they report fairly, that's all I want to say about that.
I attended the superintendent's coffee, I think two things is that, you know, with, with the federal shenanigans, you know, that's, you know, Department of Education is kind of like a lot of Title I, Title II, all, all the, all the title funds. You know, so that's kind of a big question mark for them, you know, that's, you know, free lunches, things like that. And, and services for kids who need extra help, so that's a big question mark for them. But they are slowly but steadily moving towards, you know, kind of accepting and approving the idea of selling that facility across the street, their admin building. You know, not full, I think it's still a little bit of a superintendent and board working together to kind of come up with a plan on what they want to do with that, so. Just putting that out there. I did a, a Zoom on Saturday with Representative Bynum for mayors in her district and no surprise, no matter this side of the mountain, the other side of the mountain, small town, big town, it was kind of basically the same issues, you know, federally it was just, you know, federal grants, are they coming, are they not? How, you know, how can we plan with or without them? Also, and yeah, just in, in budget, budgeting challenges around that also, oh, it's late. And then nothing that not necessarily in her wheelhouse in Congress, but a lot of people having concerns just about, you know, some communities feeling really constrained by different housing rules and policies and, and coming through the state house, either being kind of worked on right now or, or stuff that the governor's office is trying to implement. So, you know, people I think interested in building more housing and UGB expansion, things like that, but just there was some frustration from a lot of communities about their, their processes, which I was feeling like we haven't really ran into too many of those bumps yet, so I was feeling pretty good about that. I attended the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee meeting, it was in Redmond, Redmond hosted. So it was a lot of fun to see all of the projects they're working on within the city, inspiring for us. So, you know, they're a good neighbor to look at if we want some ideas on some improvements and how they're, you know, paying for them, making it work. And then the vision implementation team, circling back to that, that was a really great conversation. We had a really full room, lots of community members and agency members there. Talked about wildfire again and a little bit roundup of, we, the previous meeting, we talked about art as well, so discussions around that, but, but just a good networking event, so that's, I'll leave it at that.
I'm, I'm super encouraged that the vision has not lost any steam. I think it's awesome, I mean, I think again, it talks about.
Really proud of that.
It talks about the Sisters community in general.
Yeah, and I mean, they've been adding members, you know, for different parts of the community, which has been great because it's just more key voices at the table and the ability for everybody to work together.
And bring new people in, get some of the people that might be tired out, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
I think that's how you keep it going.
Keep it fresh.
Yeah.
I don't have anything that's time sensitive, seriously, yeah.
Cool. Can we ask how the evening with counselors went?
It would, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he was talking about.
I do.
We had, we had a couple of folks come in and it, it went well, I mean, we had a good conversation and I can go over the numbers.
Thank you, sorry, I'm sorry.
And one last thing, I don't know if Eric's still on, but today the USDA cut all the funding for the local school, the schools' local foods program, which purchases local produce and goods from farms in the region that the schools are located and, and so that may have some effect. I don't know how much some of our local, both growers and ranchers were looking to.
Table, maybe?
Steed to table, I mean, Mahoney, all, all those were probably providing some product to schools and I don't know how much that might or might not affect them if they've built programs up around that, so.
Where are they getting the food now? Food Service of America?
Yeah, it'll come from Food Service of America, yep, one of those, Cisco, somebody like that.
And I think we should consider buying admin building as a city and making a teen center out of it.
I do too, there you go.
Right.
I, I'd like to see.
We're going back to council goals.
On that note, I call this meeting adjourned.